Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for July 21, 2025. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, 1-408-650-3123, and access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com, join 235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Um, do you want to make a motion?
I'm going to read that whole happy stuff. I make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager, which if done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to non-union contract negotiations to come out of executive session and reconvene in open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor? Aye.
We've got to do a roll call.
Roll call it, beg your pardon. Okay, Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Karine.
Yes.
And Ms. Cavan says yes. So we're going out of open session, going into executive session. Why don't we stand, if you're able to, and do the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so looking at our agenda for tonight, we do have at 7:30 the discussion with our consultant on the 40B process. Before that, though, are there any public comments? Is anyone on the list there? I believe there was someone who signed up first. All right, Terri Moriarty, please. So just state your name and make sure to speak into the mic, please. Thank you.
Terri Moriarty, 15 Pack Jog Village. And I am here because of the last housing board meeting was a disgrace. So I, I just can't handle it anymore, and I made some phone calls. I did call the Town Manager. She said she has no authority over the Housing Board, which is fine. So then I went back to calling Boston, who I've called in the past. I did speak to one of the supervisors there. She told me that I could file a formal complaint to the Selectmen Board, and that in doing that, your Board has 14 days to look into my charges and then decide to leave things as they are, suspend a member, or force a member out. So that's why I'm here. And this is my formal complaint against Mr. Wayne Page of the Auburn Housing Board. The Housing Board has been corrupt and stacked to benefit Ms. Brennan for years. Mr. Page needs to be removed as he is out of control. Ms. Brennan wanted a board filled with her puppets, which is why she and Betty asked Ms. Haddaway to apply. People that I have never met tell me the writing was on the wall as soon as she brought up Lori and Betty's names at the interview. I went to the housing meeting July 8, and Ms. Haddaway denied using Lori's name. If you don't remember, please go back and watch the interview meeting. You will see that she indeed used Lori's name. If Ms. Brennan did her job properly and posted about the interview, the Housing Board would have attended. However, the interview date was postponed twice and went without the knowledge of said Board. Though the Board wouldn't be able to vote, they could have asked pertinent questions and may be given an opinion of their own. November 20 of last year, there was a Housing Board meeting. Ms. Stein Hilber, Hilber told Mr. Page that she could not attend on that date because she was working the polls. He insisted he didn't care, and that was going to be the meeting date. On 11/20, he wanted to vote Ms. Stein Hilber off the Board for not being there. Ms. Brennan told him he could not vote her off, to which he replied, "I will get rid of her, one way or another." He has been hateful and belligerent to her every chance he gets. Every time I speak up at a housing meeting, he slanders me, calling me a liar, a troublemaker, et cetera, and my issues are never settled. The man is unfit to be on this Board. If you please go back and watch the April 1 meeting, you can see him telling another Board member to shut up. Totally unacceptable behavior. At the July 8 meeting, Ms. Brennan asked for the nomination for the Chair as they needed to reorganize the Board due to having a new member. Ms. Melikin nominated Ms. Stein Hilber, as did Ms. Haddaway, and Wendy also voted for herself. That gave her three votes out of five. Mr. Page sat there looking straight at Ms. Haddaway, shaking his head no, and mouthing the word no to Ms. Haddaway. Ms. Brennan also sat there, shaking her head no. Then they both yelled at Ms. Stein Hilber, "She's not voting for you." The situation was disgusting. No common decency, no respect, and no form of Auburn's rules. Mr. Page insisted those votes were wrong, and they needed to revote. Ms. Stein Hilber was shaken up, rightfully so, and she left. I believe because nobody made a motion to reconsider or rescind the votes according to parliamentary rules, Ms. Stein Hilber should be the Chairperson and all other votes considered illegal. The job of the Housing Board is to oversee the Director and the Office. They are basically the boss of the Director to judge, is she doing her job and how good is she doing it? They should be listening to tenants and trying to work with all to the best of their ability. Being appointed or accepted to any Board should be a privilege. Mr. Page keeps showing he is not qualified to be a Board member. He refuses to do the job he was elected to do. He is an embarrassment to this town. There is no transparency to help the tenants, no respect, empathy, or common decency with his actions. This community deserves to have pride. And the people chosen, with the people chosen to represent us. With Mr. Page, there is nothing to be proud of. I could go on and on, however, I am asking you to please watch at least three housing meetings and see for yourselves. That would be November 20 of last year, April 1 of this year, and July 8 of this year, plus any other meetings that you want to watch, because a lot of them are the same. Auburn housing is mostly seniors. I'd like to know, haven't we earned the right to live with dignity in a safe and healthy environment? I thank you for your consideration, and I have a letter for each one of you as my formal complaint.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you. All right, next on our list is Dick Chandler. So just state your name for the record, and please speak into the mic.
Good evening. Dick Chandler, Rockland Road. I'm here to throw out some information to the Select Board that you might not be aware of. First of all, there's a 47 Rockland Road is a warehouse with a 600 or 700-foot driveway. The warehouse is not seen by the road, it's up on the top. Right now, there's a recycling facility operating there. They have no permits, other than doing the bathrooms over and, no building permits at all. As of this afternoon, they had no DEP number on file with the city of Worcester, the state. The number of trucks per day is way above what was negotiated between myself and two other neighbors about four or five months ago. They at one time said that they would be operating from 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, and 8 to 1 on Saturdays. They had about 8 to 14 company trucks, those are box trucks or trailer trucks, that would be going, using the facility, and they had third-party contracts with other companies who would bring recycling bottles and cans to that facility. But they were going to build a schedule for one truck per hour from 9 to 5. So if you take their 14 trucks to maximum per day, and the 11 that they could have for the third-party companies, that would give you 25 trucks per day, one way or another. We get somewhere now between 30 and 40 a day, and it's just out of control at this point. They, they just don't get the fact that they negotiated with us to do certain things, and they have not come through and done that. This is also causing potholes in Rockland Road. They had so many trucks going down that there are three in front of my house, one in front of Mr. Daley's house, and the trucks just beat them up every day. And now that this landscaping season is here, all these fellows and girls with the trucks and the equipment in the back, they hit these potholes and the equipment just jumps up and down. It's terrible. There's a new truck in the system, not owned by Auburn Light, but outside contractor. It's a 53-foot-long trailer sleeper cab. And when that comes down Rockland Road, the red maple tree across from my driveway gets beat up every time. These are just a few of the things that go on, the landscape trucks. Oh, and three weeks ago, there was an accident on the road involving a box truck that was backing out of the driveway at 47, and she had off the telephone pole across the street, bringing a response from all the emergency facilities that we have. The Highway Superintendent has been asked what the load limits are for Rockland Road truck-wise. No response, none at all. We've asked what the weight limit on the two bridges at the entrance to 47 and one right next to my house is. She says it's written on the bridge, or it's written on the road. You just can't find it. I don't think that's what they do. They don't take spray paint and write the weight limits on roads. So we're, we're asking for the Board to take a look at some of these issues. As far as I know, they have no permits whatsoever, and they just keep operating. They make promises to come to meetings, conservation, zoning, and they call in Friday morning at 8 o'clock and say, "We can't make it," and townspeople leave at 1 o'clock on Friday. So you can't even be notified. They've told them that they need three to five workdays ahead to look at what's going on and what's been presented. They just don't care. And we, we really want that system shut down until they can conform to all of the needs and permits that are required. Does this Board have the authority to issue a cease and desist? Who does?
Thank you for coming tonight. The Board does not have the authority for a cease and desist, but we will have actually just sent it off to DDIS to contact you. So I'll need your telephone number and to work with you on all of these issues. I've personally been working with Lorna on your street. Lorna, she's another resident on your street on similar issues, so we are working on that. So we'll, we'll continue to communicate with you and with her. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, if I may, can I just request that at our next available meeting, which I believe is August, that we get an update on the progress being made by staff on this project?
All right, thank you. So our next speaker is Patricia Joyce.
Good evening. Patricia Joyce, 6 Marie Ave, Precinct 2, and thought I'd mention, I'm a returning Town Meeting Member. And on Saturday, and I wanted to be specific that I'm here as a resident, but on Saturday I participated with the Friends of the Library at our very successful book sale. And we have it in the backside of the library, so I was in the midst of all the construction that's going on there, and there's a lot of, lot of dust. So things are progressing, but, you know, there's a lot of things happening in that area. You know, it's kind of hidden, so people don't, don't necessarily see what's going on there. But I, I want to bring something to, to talk about tonight. I'm a patron and a volunteer at the library. When I first attended the Friends Group, I got excited to learn of a town plan to add in addition to the library. There was much talked about of the proposal plan for a sunroom. The Friends Group already at the time was in the possession of donated monies from Dr. For the furnishing, the monies was for the furnishing in the room, furnishings in the room that would house periodicals and be a lounging space. A May 2021 Chamber of Commerce news item under the title "Library Expansion Funding" stated that it would be a beautiful sunroom with a view of the pond and proposed fountain. The expansion will feature an additional entrance to encourage patrons to visit the park. This Board, and also there was Town Meeting action that happened. There was Town Meeting items that was for the building expansion. This Board had an agenda item at a meeting I attended here to discuss a Subcommittee findings for the naming of this, of this sunroom. There was some divisive discussion, as I remember, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe a member abstained from the vote to name the sunroom. I should have tagged these pages. There's not much more. Wow, it's 2025. In April, our library director, Michael Zella, let known that the sunroom plan has been scrapped. In June, I listened as a consolation plan was spoken of to put a smaller build out on the Route 12 side of the library. So the new view would be Chase Bank, Planet Fitness, and Cars, perhaps exiting, not finding a parking space at the inadequate parking at the high school, and turning illegally onto Route 12 traffic. What I haven't learned is did the abandonment of this Town Meeting-approved project and accepted donation ever come back to the Board of Selectmen? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And is there anything you want to add at this point, or?
Sure, I'd be glad to add to this. This has been discussed several times in multiple forums. The sunroom that was decided upon quite some time ago has been discussed at length in regards to whether or not it was feasible based on how it connects to the building. There is a new proposal, albeit not finalized at all, to actually go out on that Southbridge Street side, the full length of the whole building, not a small portion, but a full length, to provide much-needed meeting space that was determined in the survey that they did of people that use the library. So it has been discussed here. It is not formalized yet. It is still in the preliminary design so that a picture can be brought to Mrs. Pappas. She is actually the determining factor on this because she is the donor. We did do, as you know, because it's pretty widely used, the children's center, the children's area that she wanted to have done, and the only thing that we did not use the funds for, for, from the Friends is for the furniture there, because we wanted to make sure that we made the right decision with that. So once those diagrams are done, we'll be meeting with Mrs. Pappas. We'll be bringing it to the Board, and we'll be bringing it to the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Tim Daley. Hi, Tim. Sure, you can, wherever you want. Just make sure to say your name and speak in, say your name and speak into the mic, please.
Tim Daley, Tim Daley, 25 Rockland Road. I won't recap, rehash any of what Mr. Chandler said, but if I may approach the Board, I have a copy of the, of the variance for the property from 1969, and I'd just like to just read part of it, and I'll give each one of you this, but I assume that this whole piece of paper is the variance. And what I, what I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is that if this is the variance, then we, the neighbors, believe that the last sentence is, "Any stipulations that any such operations will not be obnoxious or objectionable to the neighborhood." So we, we feel that this is a violation of the variance, and that after all these years, we should not be able to just fold the variance in half and talk about the top half of the variance. We should take the whole variance into consideration. So we really feel that we do have a right, and it is obnoxious with the 30 or 40 trucks, and it is objectionable to the neighborhood. I mean, they, they run all day. So I don't know if any of you have discussed that or heard of that, but we feel that that's a, a large part of the variance. So I will pass this, this around if you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a last thought. I, I have to apologize to my neighbors, because when this started back in May of 2024, was our first meeting, I, I thought in my mind that we could negotiate, that we could work together with, with the person of the property. I thought we could establish something, but it hasn't worked that way, and now it's just seems to have gotten worse, that they're adding like 15 minutes here, 5 minutes there, 10 minutes there. So they're kind of taking, we feel, advantage. And just, you know, last but not least is that it's just delay after delay. You know, for 15 months, we have, we have nothing, and they're still running their business. We have, we have a problem with that. So I just wanted to get you a copy of this, and we feel that, you know, they are in a violation of it, but I don't know. That's my feeling. That's our feeling, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Mr. Capaldi. Do you, are you going to speak on Wallace Ave? Do you, do you want to wait till the hearing, or?
I didn't realize I had an opportunity at the hearing.
It's not, I beg your pardon, at the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, it's at your discretion. I'm just.
Yes, you'll be able to.
I think it's not a hearing.
Okay, so you'll be able to speak at the discussion.
Before or after a potential vocal detain?
Before.
Thank you all the way.
Thank you. Ed Pocat? Same thing, you'll wait? Okay, and we will have, let people talk. John Capuano?
John Capuano, 2 Rice Road, Auburn, Mass. I'm here on behalf of Rockland Road residents, and I'm a butter. I'm going to butter to number 47. What's happening is that this company is trying to expand the business, and in doing so, it's going to require a lot more trucks to come in and give them the raw materials and then take out the finished product. So they are a manufacturing company now. It's not, no longer a warehouse. They are producing product in that building. The, the, the company is actually extending their business, so it's now including Rockland Road as a major part of their driveway, because they have so many trucks coming down between Auburn Street, down Rockland Road, to the driveway or the culvert at the bottom of the hill. And the trucks, sometimes they park there along the side and wait until they come in, and it's a one-way driveway, which is quite long, very, very long. You can't see the end of it from one side, from one end to the other. You can't see the end of it. So there's actually like a convoy of trucks in the morning, and then in the afternoon, you have the same thing coming out, because the trucks last one day. And Rockland Road is actually now becoming an industrial road. It's no longer a residential road. And this company is in an RA zone, so that everything around that building in that property is RA, except for that piece of land, number 47 and number 49. There are three things that are really wrong with this whole plan that the company wants to do. You have an expansion plan, you have traffic plan, and you have the Kettle Brook problem. The Kettle Brook runs right alongside of the driveway, or the driveway runs alongside the Kettle Brook. And there's no protection right now to protect the Brook from any debris coming off of the trucks. And the plans that I've seen by the engineers hired by this company, they do address those problems, but seeing what's been done so far with the maintenance of those, with the maintenance of the buildings and the gravel driveway now, I would sincerely doubt that they are going to do one little bit of maintenance. So there's talk now about paving the driveway. It's still in a working process, and we've been going at this thing now for a couple of years, and we do not come to an agreement ever with any of the Boards. And there's always something new that's required from the engineers to be reviewed at the coming-up meeting. I've been watching this since March, and the Boards require that if you're going to have a plan and you do an updated plan, that you have to present that plan to these departments three to five days ahead of schedule so that they can review the plans and look at them and try. at them and try to understand them. But they're not engineers, but they try to understand them. Well, since March, two meetings ago, they delivered their latest plan one hour before the meeting. And I brought that up at that meeting, and the chairman said, "Well, I understand it." So be it. But, so we have to come up with a way of forcing these engineers and developers and contractors to abide by the rules and that the individual departments actually find a way of penalizing these companies and engineers if they can't do it on time. Because people like myself, we go to these meetings and we don't understand anything. And we don't get the plans. And I'd like to suggest that, I would like to suggest that whenever you have a planning board meeting, a zoning board meeting, uh, a conservation meeting, that there should be a, a screen or a, uh, a projector showing a map, the new map, on a wall or on a screen so that when I start talking about what are they going to do with the fence, what are they going to do with that road, what are you going to do with that culvert, somebody out there understands what I'm talking about, and when they're talking to me, someone out there understands what they're talking about. Because it's not really an open meeting if no one knows what we're talking about. And I think that should be changed, and it should be changed immediately because you can't present a plan, and you can't expect anyone but a surveyor or an engineer to understand these plans in an hour. You can't do it. So, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking that this business just outgrew themselves. They, you know, they're, they're growing, but they outgrew themselves, and they do not do any maintenance. And now they're trying to expand the building a little bit, and they want to expand their trucks side, you know, the number of trucks coming in. But they may be looking for something else. Maybe they should be moving somewhere else because there's so much work that has to be done between the Brook protection, and this Brook feeds directly into the Blackstone And, um, and that, it should be a no-no if, for debris and for snow removed. They can't even remove the snow from the road they have because you can't dump it anywhere, and it's five or 600 feet long. So, they're getting away with a lot of little things, and yet with, these Boards are still saying, "Well, you know what? If you don't like the noise, plant trees." That's an exact quote, you know, to, to a person, to an abutter. If you don't like the noise the trucks are making, plant trees. You know, if you don't like the way the trucks are parking on Rockland Road, call the cops." Those are exact quotes. So, I'm not trying to make things up, but I'm thinking that you guys should get a little bit involved, maybe. I don't know if you can, but a little bit involved, find out what's going on, and maybe bring it to a head. So, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that's it for the public comments. Let's look at our agenda. Keep in mind that at 7:30, we're going to have a discussion on the 40B. We're going to have an information, uh... Mr. Page? Did you sign up?
No, I just come in a minute ago.
Why don't you wait because we're going to have comments at the end? We're already, we're already running, yes.
There's a sign-up sheet right up there.
The sign-up sheet's right there, okay? We're already running behind.
Will you sign it out?
Sure. So, we have, uh, public comments. Community organizations are next. We don't have any presentation, public hearings, none. Departmental items, none. Uh, number seven, communications. Informational communication regarding the HVAC updates in the town and the use of ARPA funds. Uh, that would be by our CFO, Karen Harnoys, and our HVAC project coordinator, Joe Fahey. So, you guys, if you could come on up here, please. Thank you. Yep.
Can I just look at? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Busy night.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak about these exciting ABRA projects, energy projects that we're doing. When I presented this to you last year, we spoke about rough estimates in our rebate programs that we're going to be getting from National Grid. And we just put a couple of projects out to bid now, and obviously, our, um, our estimated labor costs has risen and equipment costs have risen. Uh, rebates themselves are pretty much stable. Um, National Grid is still giving us phenomenal rebates. What National Grid has done is they contracted out with an engine, engineering firm called The Rise Group. And what they do is they'll take our projects, they'll dissect them, and they'll give us, National Grid, their feedback on what our rebate actually should be. So, it's not so much of because we had a 50-ton unit, we're going to get $3,500 per ton. There's some calculations that, that are involved in that. So, uh, so what we're doing is we're focusing on six buildings. The high school, senior center, police station, town hall, Randall Building, and the DPW offices. And if you look at the documents that you have in front of you, I can go over those with you rather quickly.
No, I don't.
Okay. So, the first one, we have, um, engineering, design, administration costs, and project oversight. And that, um, that cost tallied up to about $145,000. Uh, timeline for that is pretty much throughout the rest of the year. And what those projects detailed was engineering fees, um, design fees for the, for the high school rooftop projects, Paket Chag School. We're, um, we are actually, um, going to be doing that next year with CIP funds, uh, but the design portion came out of the ABRA funds, just, just to spend that money down. We contracted a couple of engineers, Seaman Engineering, um, who've done our, our middle school. They're, uh, they're a phenomenal company. Um, they're, they're Auburn residents. Uh, they, they truly, um, um, think we're special to the town, so we're, we're lucky to have them on board. Uh, and then the project oversight is, uh, is the feat to put all these projects together. So, the projects that we have identified already are the high school. We put it out to bid. Two rooftop units. One is a 60-ton unit, another one's a 68-ton unit. Uh, those prices came, came pretty high, $708,000 is what the bids came in at. And it was awarded to Arujio Brothers, um, who is, uh, in the schematic design phase now, uh, knowing that school starts at the end of August. So, uh, those two units will be done, grabbing us a rebate from National Grid of $366,380, which was going to be put aside to another fund. The senior center, we knew right out of the gate that the green room, uh, air conditioning system was down, so what we were able to do was use the existing CIP funds that you had, uh, that you already had established there, and we used the ABRA funds to purchase the equipment and the miscellaneous, um, parts and the electrical work to go along with that, just that one room. That was to give us a $7,000 rebate. And that green room is actually complete. And we put that first, knowing that it's a, um, that it's a cooling center, uh, for the town when we do have our, hopefully, we don't have any more heat waves. But knowing too that we have five more additional, um, areas that we need to upgrade there, and I'll talk about that in the, in the future. So, next on the list is the, uh, DPW, uh, Green Communication Heat Pump Project, which we, um, being the Green Community members, uh, for the town, we're allowed each year to participate in a program. And usually, we flip-flop. One, one year, we usually do a school project, next year, we usually do a town project. So, this year, we took advantage of it, and with the help of, um, Brooke Holberg, your, uh, who did this grant for us, we, um, we hope to find out by the end of the month whether or not we've been awarded it, but, uh, usually, we do pretty well. So, the, the ABRA funds are going to contribute towards the equipment costs, which is $90,000. Electrical was just $10,000, and that's going to give us a $35,000 rebate that, again, we put into another fund that will be used in, um, in a couple, um, couple of areas down, as I'll talk about. Next, we have, um, the police station. Uh, we, we have a chiller that we're going to be replacing the air conditioning unit with, uh, using the funds from that. And, uh, that's an exciting project. So, in other words, what we have at the police station now, and, um, is we have just a straight, uh, air conditioning unit. So, you have an air conditioning unit, and you have a boiler, gas boiler. By installing this type of, um, chiller, which is going to do heating and cooling, right, we're going to take the load off the boilers that we have in, in the police station and, um, utilize that one along with a $63,000, $62,000 rebate. That's going to start, uh, we're hoping, in October of this year. And then, uh, next on the list, we have the town hall, which is to design the HVAC, $356,000 estimated, electrical pad, electrical and electrical pad, $30,000. Heat pump, which we already, heating pump, which we already replaced in the springtime here for $10,000, and removed that, I like to call it the boat anchor on the side of the building for, uh, the old AC unit, uh, for 40, for $4,595. And last on the, um, potential list is the Randall Window Project Installation. We can't, we can't upgrade, uh, energy-efficient projects with single-pane windows anymore, so, uh, by putting that out to bid. Uh, we did it in two phases, uh, top floor, bottom floor, just anticipating high costs because, um, again, labor and, uh, equipment costs have, have, have risen. Uh, so, um, 270 was awarded to Diversified, um, Construction Company, which hope to have that completed in, um, the later part of October. So, as you can see in the bottom, uh, the total cost is 1.9 million, uh, which is slightly higher than the available funds of 1.5 million. So, with the rebates that we've gotten, or will potentially that we'll get, will give us a $606,000 rebate, which would give us a, um, a positive of $281,000 and some odd change that we'll be able to use as a contingency line. And actually, if we don't use it in the contingency line, roll that into the other projects that we have, uh, at the senior center. And I know last year, I gave you a very big list on all these potential projects. Uh, tried to get a little bit of everything from each building in town, but, um, our funds just aren't there. So, I don't want to lose those projects, so I, I just, you'll have that, uh, on the second page. We have the senior center, complete those. We have the Paket Chag School boil conversion unit that's already been identified in the CIP. The high school, there's another four units that potentially can bring us, uh, roughly $540,000 worth of rebates. And I can kick it off to get the cemetery, fire department, Paket Chag Golf Course, Randall Building. Brenwood, we have some CIP funds for HVAC design. So, these funds are available pretty much until the end of December of '27. And then National Grid, I don't know what they propose to do after that. Hopefully, they'll continue these rebates. But, uh, I think, um, the fact of the matter is, is that, um, we need to obviously try to reduce our carbon footprint and, uh, keep on top of the law as far as, um, eliminating the fossil fuels. So, just don't want to lose sight of, uh, these potential future projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So, if I can just finish?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm just about done. I know you got, I know you got a busy night. I, I won't read the other 17 pages, guys, I promise. You're welcome. Uh, but I can't, I just want to say, I can't thank enough, uh, the administration that you have here. Um, Dory and Karen, uh, have been phenomenal, and their support staff. Larian Copeland's been great with my purchase orders, anything to make that happen. Um, and again, um, Brooke Holberg for doing the Green Community, um, grant. That was, that was huge. So, that's my update.
Thank you. Thank you.
And any questions?
Is, is there anything you need from this Board at this time? I know you were providing information, but obviously, you've got a pretty good plan in place, and you seem to have mitigated some of that cross-concern and still move forward, but is there anything that you need from this Board to continue that support, or?
Um, actually, I think I'm doing pretty good with the support of, uh, of, um, your administration here. Unless you have a bucket of money somewhere that you'd like to give me?
We don't, but that's typically when we're spending money, people come back and look for money.
I understand, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we're not going to say it on camera, Joe. It might be a hidden money. We have to ask Ed, though.
That's true.
We're all the...
That's why we're digging up the front, if you know this. We already had, we had...
He's forgotten. It's been so long.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Karen, may I ask you, when does the ARPA money have to be spent by?
By December of 2026.
Chair, before we get to the 7:30 meeting, can we just take a brief recess so we can maybe bring in a few more chairs because we have people standing up?
Do I hear a motion to have a recess? Five-minute recess?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Five-minute recess. I called the motion, called the meeting back to order.
Can I make a motion to move up item 8E and then followed by item 8F?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we're moving up item 8E, which is the discussion with our consultant on 40, the 40B process and the select board on 80 Wallace Ave. 88 Wallace Ave, I beg your pardon, 88. Okay, so here's our, please introduce yourself, sir.
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates. I've been hired as your Chapter 40B expert, if you will.
Can I speak up a little bit, please?
Certainly. Just a little bit with regards to my background. I have been in the land development industry for 35 years. By education and normal trade, I'm a civil engineer. But I have gained an immense amount of knowledge in the 40B process in different venues. It started with my role on the Hudson, Massachusetts Zoning Board of Appeals for 20 years, many of those years as chairman and many of those years facing or reviewing Chapter 40B projects. I then have worked into being a technical advisor for Massachusetts Housing Partnership. I'm one of six advisors in the state that are hired out to zoning boards of appeals to advise them on the process and to help them move through the, what can be a very challenging process with regards to implementation of the regulations and the nuances therein. I'll be happy to kind of give you an overview of the 40B process as I see it, if that would help, help the residents and the board. Chapter 40B was enacted in 1969 by the legislature. It's sometimes called the Anti-Snob Zoning Act. Essentially, what the state legislature was looking at was all the affordable housing was being built in the cities. And the cities were taking on just a lion's share of that kind of responsibility and administration. And the communities out in the suburbs, away from the cities, out into the rural areas, were adopting zoning that wasn't allowing multifamily housing, let alone affordable housing. So in the legislature's infinite wisdom, they came up with this law. And it was sparsely used in the early days, but around the 1980s and 90s, it really came into favor with the private development community. And essentially, the crux of the law is that in exchange for creating a percentage of affordable housing within a project, a developer can go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a single comprehensive permit, where all local permits are subsumed into that one process. And within that process can be granted waivers from local requirements. And that primarily is zoning, density, height, setbacks, things of that nature. The use, doing multifamily in a single-family residential neighborhood. But also, there are other local bylaws and regulations, such as local septic regulations or local wetlands regulations that are also subsumed into that process. So the percentage is 25% of the units have to be considered affordable. And I can go into what affordable means.
That's all right right now, but...
Yeah. So they need to, they need to commit to providing that, those affordable units. And essentially, the units will be affordable in perpetuity. In the case of a rental project, they're just, they have to be rented to people that qualify. And those people have to be monitored on an annual basis and meet those income requirements. On a for-sale project, the 25% buyers are basically chosen through a lottery system. And they have to qualify and not make more than 80% of area median income to qualify. And then they have, they can, they can purchase a unit. And those units are deed restricted such that when they sell the unit, they have to sell to an affordable buyer. The developer also has to promise to limit their profit. And that profit limitation is administered through the state and overseen through the state. On a for-sale project, it's 20% of the total project cost. And on a rental project, it's 10% of the annual equity. And that's monitored on an ongoing basis. On the for-sale project, there is a final project audit that proves that they didn't make any more than the 20%. And that's administered through the state. And if there's anything over the 20%, that windfall goes back to the community for creation of affordable housing.
If you hold on, I think I'm going to have to interrupt you because we have so many people who are waiting to speak and then ask questions. I think we're going to go to that part.
Okay, certainly.
So...
Madam Chair, can the board members ask questions before we go to the public?
Yes.
So you briefly mentioned the role of the ZBA. What is the role of the select board in the 40B housing process?
The select board's role only comes into play under what's known as a local initiative petition. And that's just a form of a 40B. Normally, on a conventional 40B, a developer goes directly to mass housing or mass development to get what's known as a project eligibility letter. There's an, and that's with the state. And there's an internal process that they review the project and issue the Pell. Once the Pell is issued, then they can go directly to the ZBA. In the case of a local initiative petition, essentially, the developer comes to the Board of Selectment first, looking for the board's endorsement of the project. In 1990, they created this LIP process in which they see that the technical assistance that's provided by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, HLC, is the subsidy, once the town endorses the project or partners with the project. Then, once that endorsement happens, the application for the project eligibility letter goes to EO HLC, not mass housing. And it's not as rigorous an internal review process at HLC. There is a review process, but the, essentially, the, some of the review process, when you go the mass housing, conventional 40B route, is taking public input, taking the town's input. The town is given 30 days to make comment. And then the Pell can be influenced by that, that public comment. On the LIP side, it's seen that, okay, the town is partnering or endorsing this through the Board of Selectment. And therefore, while they may still have comments, the town may still have comments. The Pell is generally issued without a lot of fanfare. It's faster. HLC's review is faster than mass housing's because of that.
So if the town were to still have the comments, the comments are directed to the ZBA at that point? Or there might, it still might not get approved, correct?
Which might...
So if there was a LIP, it goes through the H...
HLC.
HLC, okay. So again, you said the town still might have comments.
The town has comments. Once the Pell is issued, from either HLC, in the case of a LIP, or mass housing, in the case of a conventional 40B, you proceed, the developer proceeds to an application for a comprehensive permit with the ZBA. The ZBA is under no restriction on their charge to fully vet the project and to render a decision. And there are very specific requirements for the ZBA in rendering a decision. And they should not be influenced by the fact that the Board of Selectment endorsed it or did not. They need to move through that process, that very complex six-month process of vetting the project and getting into the technical details. And whatever comes out of that decision, comes out of that decision. It's the, it's the ZBA's authority, full and sole authority.
So no matter what is negotiated in the LIP, the ZBA has the authority to choose to move forward with it, accept it, or alter anything that might be in a LIP agreement?
Absolutely. The ZBA should feel that they are an independent body with full jurisdiction over issuance of the comprehensive permit, and they have three choices. They can approve the project, they can approve it with conditions, or they can deny. And there are some very defined ground rules with regards to how that decision is made. But it certainly is whatever the ZBA deliberates and moves forward on.
Thank you.
So I just want to be clear. There is no vote that the select board can take that will prevent the developer from going to the state and moving this project forward?
If, if the Board of Selectmen chooses not to endorse the project, then the developer can, by right, move to the other route and go to mass housing and get a project eligibility letter from them and go to ZBA independent. And what's lost there is whatever you have negotiated that goes into your sub-agreement. But there's, the sub, the agreement that you made, choose to sign with the developer is in no way binding on the ZBA and their charge to fully vet the project and issue a comprehensive permit. Or deny a comprehensive permit.
You answered what was going to be my second question, was that there's, there's no vote, the ZBA is under no obligation to approve, to approve the conditions, or deny a project simply because the select board entered into a LIP agreement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
On the monitoring and the affordability piece, who is responsible for monitoring and making sure that the project is following the affordability guidelines set forth in 40B?
The state.
There is no responsibility on the local authority to...
No. Since the regulation changes in 2008, they've clearly defined the separation of responsibilities. And all that has to do with affordability monitoring and making sure that people that apply actually qualify and the cost monitoring of the profit limitations is all on the state. The ZBA's role is to vet the project with the local, all of the local requirements, local concerns, input from the neighborhood, and come up with either mitigation through plan changes or mitigation through conditions of approval to address those local concerns.
Last question. These audits that the state perform, are they public records?
Yes.
If someone wanted to get a copy of one of these audits of these buildings, they could do that?
Yes.
Who would they request that through?
EO HLC.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just have two more questions. In terms of the, if the Zoning Board of Appeals votes to either deny the petition or approve with conditions, the developer has the right to appeal that decision to a state committee, correct?
Yes. The right of appeal of the developer is, goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is not a court. It is part of EO HLC. The proceedings are court-like in the review and presentations and so forth. And they have, they go by the strict regulations, the governing regulations of Chapter 40B, which again, clearly state what, you know, what the decision criteria is and what the powers of the ZBA are. And there's a, the decisions that come out of HAC are akin to case law. So many times, they will cite that, those cases, the results of those cases as precedent. An important, very important tenet of Chapter 40B is a presumption. And the presumption is the need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns. The need for affordable housing is defined as you're under 10% of your housing stock. You're at 5.24% of your housing stock that's considered affordable. And therefore, there isn't a need. So that defines the need. The local concerns are your zoning and your local regulations and so forth and everything else that's brought to the table during the hearing process. And understand that the balance, the scale is tipped pretty much, that that presumption is pretty strong. And that is the basis of the ZBA's decision. And it's only until a local concern rises to an egregious level that tips that balance and gives justification for the board to either overly condition an approval or deny a project because that, that balance has been tipped.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, so we have some speakers. I believe the first one is Dan Craig. Make sure you speak into the mic, okay?
My name is Dan.
My name is Dan Craig, and I live at 90 Wallace Ave. I'm the director butler of this project. And several things have changed over time, as this gentleman said, you know, regulations have changed and things have been added, but what hasn't changed one bit is the shape of the land, okay? I've lived next to that land since 1989. The road hasn't gotten any wider. The land is still at the same steepness, depends on which set of prints you look at, because this, all this set of prints doesn't exactly match the new set of prints. But that being said, the land hasn't changed. The road at the entry to this new project is exactly 20 feet wide, tar to tar. There are two catchways there that measure outside 20 feet. The land on the side of the road where this driveway enters the property is not, it's right on the edge of the right-of-way. The right-of-way doesn't come down the middle of the street. The right-of-way is crowded to one side of the road, which goes down over an embankment. Okay? That embankment has four houses down there, four families that bought in this neighborhood so that they could live where they wanted to live. There's only two people that stand to make anything on this project. That's the guy that's selling the land and the guy that's buying the land, okay? Everybody else is taking a hit. Initially, when this was brought before this board, there were 72 units. Now there's over 90. 72 units was unacceptable to our little neighborhood. There's only a little over 70 houses on our street. Now it's going to be over 90 units. Some with one family, some with two, some with three. So, you know, you multiply the people by the cars, the bedrooms and the cars. That street is not wide enough in any given spot to accept that kind of traffic. So I'm looking at this as a safety issue, okay? This land hasn't changed, except the steepness of the grade on one set of blueprints is just a little bit steeper than the other one, which would mean that the land that would have to be altered would be different on one set of blueprints as opposed to the other one, which means the dirt that would be taken off of that property might become objectionable, you know, with the town bylaws. But the big deal is, there's no place to move this land toward that project. That the side of the road is the edge of the right-of-way. All the land would have to be taken on the other side of the road, on the downhill side, where the developer has said, "We can make this better for you." You know, you're going to have 200 cars coming in and out of that place every day, hitting these houses with their headlights, sliding down this grade, because the grade isn't going to be changed that much, and there's nothing they can really do to make that better. They say, "Well, we're going to try and negotiate with these people." If you read the LIP agreement, that we're going to try and negotiate with these people to see if we can somehow make this a softer acceptance. How do you accept, you know, the last statement that's made in the LIP agreement in this particular area says that we will try, but it's not going to stop us from moving forward if it doesn't happen. So, you know, we've got people that may wind up with all these headlights in their bedrooms or worse, you know, in the winter when it's icy and they're coming down this roadway, you know, from this project. They slide across the road, they go down the embankment, they're in somebody's house. That can happen in two out of four houses. So where are we widening this land to? We've got to do a property take here, you know? So are we taking that by eminent domain? Are we buying this land from the people? Are we going to tell them that they have to have a 12-foot wall in front of their bedroom window? Because that's about what it's going to be to make this project work, to widen the land. Also, they're going to put in a water main from that driveway all the way down to Rochdale Street, over 2,500 feet. And the builder, developer, if you will, is going to pay for that. The town is going to pay for the asphalt. They're going to pay for the sidewalks. So when that gentleman sat up here before, he said, "Unless you've got a pot of money somewhere, you know, we're going to make, we're going to try and make do with what we got." Well, you don't have a pot of money to go spending this on a place where a project doesn't belong. They're looking to put three four-story buildings up there that will house 92 or 94, whatever it is, families. We're a residential neighborhood. That's a commercial project. It's, these buildings are the size of hotels, and they're stuck in a place where they just plain don't belong. But that sounds like sour grapes, and I know sour grapes isn't going to win or lose this project. But the safety of our children, the safety of the people that live in these houses, the safety of the people that are coming up there and down that street to visit somebody, that is our concern, okay? We can't take that, you know, you would just ask the question, what is the Select Board's, you know, part of this deal? You know, we elected you guys. We elected you to do the job to protect us, to protect our interests, to serve and protect. You know, everybody takes an oath when they take a job like this. I wouldn't want your job, you know, so my hat's off to you for doing it, but do not sign this LIP. I'm asking you not to sign this LIP. It is not the right thing at this point in time. This project is still, there's a lot of questions on the table. There are, we've offered information to this board on several different occasions. Some of it has come into question by somebody on the board, don't know who, don't care, okay? We looked up stuff, okay? We can substantiate the information that we brought in front of this board. You know, when I tell you that the grades are different on one set of blueprints and another, you've got to look, but they're there. So I'm asking this board not to sign that LIP agreement tonight or any other night. If this gentleman is going to have that project in our neighborhood, make him work for it. Thank you.
Mr. Pezznol, do you have any response to any of his comments?
No, the process normally is for the Board of Selectmen to look at the, a project in concept and to endorse an idea. The idea is, three buildings, 96 units, so that's kind of a big part of it. But as far as the, getting into the technical issues, that really is the role of the zoning board, to receive a full traffic report that talks, speaks to the safety of the adjoining roadways and all of that, and to hire third-party peer reviewers to totally vet that and to work through and understand the, if there is mitigation that is necessary and can the mitigation be done. So with regards to widening the road, is there room within the right-of-way to widen the road if the zoning board feels that, or if the outcome of the traffic review is that the road needs to be widened, then the charge goes out to the developer? Do a survey, let us understand where the right-of-way is related to the existing pavement, and can it be widened, and how should it be widened? And all of those details are worked out at the zoning board. That's not to say that those things are important and should be considered at this juncture. I think, I think this board did in memorializing the traffic condition within the agreement. But the devil is in the details, and the details get worked out at the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ralph Capaldi? Make sure you speak into the mic, okay? Thank you, thank you.
No one's ever accused me of not speaking loudly. I doubt you'll have a problem hearing me tonight. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm Ralph Capaldi. I live at 94 Wallace Avenue. I'm here with my wife, Kim. We've lived there for 25 years, and we've raised two great young men there. They're 20 and 18 now. They had a great opportunity to grow up in a safe, secure neighborhood with people we consider our family. And we hope that the next family that lives at 94 Wallace Avenue will have that same opportunity. This project threatens that. Tonight, you've heard from Mr. Craig every reason why you shouldn't sign the LIP, and you'll hear more from Mr. Parquet, so I won't go into all of those reasons. But I think, I have to believe that nobody behind the dais thinks this is a good idea. It's not to say 40B projects don't have merit and value. They do, but only in certain conditions, and they do create opportunity for everyone. Town master plan and the residents of Wallace Avenue recognize this. The town has outlined areas where 40B projects would be well-suited. And as our friend and guest today has said, the long arm of the state has imposed its will on jurisdictions all over Massachusetts, and this needs to end. We need to make a statement as a town and as a community that we would like a place at the table when deciding these issues. There needs to be collaboration between the towns and the state, not between developers in the town or developers in the state. We realize that the Board of Selectmen has limited control over this, we really do. We understand what your role is, but you must play your part by getting the ball rolling at the grassroots level. It starts by refusing to sign this LIP because it just doesn't make sense. Don't sign it solely because you're afraid you might lose something. We don't want anything. If the developer is going to get this project through, let him get it through with his hard work. Our friend tonight said, "By endorsing and signing the LIP, the developer will get a Pell." He said that will make it easier and less expensive for the developer. Is that right, sir? Why the hell do we want to do that? That's not what we want, okay? That's not what we want. The developer has agreed to pay $1 million to replace a section of the water main on Wallace Ave. $1 million. There's discussion about the town agreeing to repave the road, as Mr. Craig said. Why would we agree to that? Why are town residents expected to pay expenses associated with a private development project? Unless the LIP has changed, and I have a copy of it, it says in the LIP, and this is a quote, "The developer agrees to the following: replacing the existing six-inch water main with an eight-inch water main from the project entry to the Rochdale Street of approximately 2,400 linear feet at developer's sole cost and expense," end quote. One would think repaving the road would be included as a part of that project. Without this project, Wallace Avenue doesn't need to be repaved, okay? And it doesn't need a new water main. Look around. Look at the roads. I think that money's more well-spent somewhere else. And I live on Wallace Ave. Would I love a brand-new road? Sure. But I also drive on the other roads in Auburn. Besides, wouldn't the offer to repave the road sort of negate anything he's offering in the LIP, like the sidewalks, which nobody really wants anyway? Besides which, if you look at this LIP, every one of these concessions can be asked for at the ZBA level, and it's not like he's providing us with the world, so if we lose it, we really don't care. If this is allowed to happen, what do you think is next? The same individual that sold 88 Wallace Avenue, or will be selling, I don't know where it stands right now, owns just under 12 acres off William Street. All that person needs to do is acquire one property on Wallace Avenue that abuts that property, and there's 12 acres, open for 40B. The infrastructure's already there. Is that what we want? It's not what I want. It's not what they want. It's not what the people of the town of Auburn want. And it's your job, in your limited capacity, to speak for us. And we're asking you not to sign the LIP, not to sign it today, tomorrow, or any other And it's ironic, because the person who sold 88 Wallace Avenue tried this many years ago and got denied for safety reasons. Those safety reasons still exist today. In the meantime, because he was denied, he applied for and got a seven, I believe it was a seven, single-family home sub-development approved. No one here complained. We would have been there with butter knives, helping him cut the trees down, because we want him to be able to develop his land, but in a way that's appropriate and fits in with the character of the neighborhood. And this project does not meet that standard, and the LIP should not be signed solely for that reason. We want to fight him every step of the way. We don't care about a sidewalk, walking trails, a 20-foot buffer zone, or walls with shrubbery that's going to need perpetual care. We don't care about any of those things, okay? What we care about is the safety of our children, the character of our neighborhood, and the peace and quiet we all move to our neighborhood to enjoy. So although the Board of Select can take the position that signing the LIP has no impact on the approval process, which, according to our friend, it does not, and we agree on that, we're asking you to understand your obligation and responsibility to act on our behalf as your constituents. Please don't sign the LIP. Instead, send a letter detailing our concerns to the state, exactly as you did for the Athens Street project. You've had success in that endeavor. We deserve the same. Given the potential legal issues that exist with making the roadway safe for this project, I believe we have an even better argument. The people of the town are watching your leadership on these critical issues now and moving forward. Please refuse to sign the LIP and fight with us. Together, we can win, and in the process, maybe we can regain some of the autonomy we deserve as a town. Thank you.
To the chair. Yep. So Athens Street did not come before us for a LIP. They went straight to the state, so there was nothing to negotiate there.
Should we send the order?
Athens Street, we absolutely, yes, yes. So, so we weren't afforded the opportunity to work on a LIP to mitigate concerns. If I can ask the consultant, do you know what the threshold for safety is, and if it can be mitigated, and if one of those concerns is the roadway and they add sidewalks, has that ever been denied?
I will not touch that one. It's very, it's, what has to happen is, a traffic engineer needs to get involved and do a full evaluation of the roadway system, the speeds, the number of trips that happen on it. It's a full traffic impact analysis. And then a third-party peer-review engineer has to look at that. So that's two traffic engineers that get together and figure out what defines safety, and they have national standards that they utilize and their own expertise. That is not my expertise, so it's impossible to say in this venue at this time.
So that's based on the traffic thing? Because, again, what are the reasons that a 40B can get denied? Safety is one of them, correct?
Again, it's, it's, it's safety, health, environment, open space, there's four or five key words, right, that are in the regulations, that are things that could tip that scale, right? So let's just talk about traffic, not about this project, but in general. There's a case in Groton in which the denial was based on the inability to achieve safe site distance for a vehicle leaving the site. They're pulling out onto a major roadway with higher speeds, and they can't see whether there's a car coming to safely navigate that. That couldn't be mitigated, right? Couldn't be conditioned. The plan couldn't be changed. It was what it was. It was what it was. It was what it was, it was what it was and couldn't be mitigated. That was a justifiable denial because that local concern, that safety concern, was egregious enough to tip the presumption.
So if the developer can address the safety concerns, they tip it back?
Correct.
And again, like, I helped negotiate this lip based on concerns, based on trying to get things that he's not going to do, and we can certainly fight it, but at what cost? Because the ZBA still has to go through their process. If this is an outline and the ZBA chooses to use it, I think that only helps their cause and they can continue to ask for other things. I don't know if it's going to get approved or denied, but in the experience I've had, and one of the reasons we were working on this, was to ask for everything we could get out of the developer before going, because if they go straight to the state and spend that money, that's money that's not going to be mitigated back. We added the water line, he only has to connect, if this gets approved, at that street. Residents raised concerns about the water line being dug up and fixed every so often, so one of the things was, at his cost, he was going to do that. I think, and I don't think the water department's here, but they don't need to upsize the water main. They certainly can make that connection, and then the road will continue to be impacted. One of the reasons, or one of the concerns we brought to the developer was, when this project, if it gets approved, is complete, are they going to be digging up that road constantly again? And again, if you look at the Eastland Partners or Albert Street, everyone complains that they've been running a mining operation forever, they clear-cut all the way up to the road, and all those delays have continued to keep that negative impact in that community, in that area, and it's, there's not much we can do, except to try to set the guidelines, try to get more for it. We can certainly come up here and we can all deny it, or don't do the lip, but I don't see a way, and no one showed me a way, that safety isn't going to be able to be mitigated on this project.
Madam Chair, if I might, just to add.
Yes, sir, yep.
One of the most difficult things for a zoning board to unwrap during the process is whether a mitigation is directly related to the project, or especially with off-site mitigation. And if the developer can demonstrate that it doesn't have to upgrade the water main, then the zoning board can try to negotiate that, that those off-site mitigations within the process. But they can't condition it. If they condition it, then the developer can appeal to HAC, HAC will look at the record and say, no, you, you can't make them do something that's not their fault, or that not, not they haven't caused the problem. So there's a very, very delicate dance that happens between defining things that are a result of the project and can be conditioned, and those that the developer are willing to offer to ease the process. The lip process kind of frontloads some of that, as you've described, and tries to negotiate those, those items upfront. So now, when it goes to the ZBA, there is at least those commitments that the developer has made that can then be memorialized. You don't condition them, you don't condition that the developer shall replace the water mine, water line, you memorialize that the developer has offered through the agreement with, with the Board of Selectmen to do that, and anything else that fits into that category. The, the trouble is that at this juncture, without all of the detail and all of the studies and all of the information that can be vetted and peer-reviewed and all of that, it's even harder to define whether something is a project-related issue, or something that the board in good faith has negotiated and gotten outside of that.
Madam Chair, if I may just add on to that. So, you know, I think with respect to the, you know, whether there is or is not a safety issue that can be mitigated, that would not take place at this level, that would take place at the ZBA, where again, you would have, and this is called out in the lip as well, a full traffic study submitted to the ZBA by the developer, then peer-reviewed at expense of the developer, that ZBA would hire their own consultant, would expense it to the developer, who would come and provide feedback on the legitimacy of the traffic, the traffic impact assessment, and identify any safety concerns, and then there would be, before the ZBA, discussion on whether those can be mitigated or not.
Correct.
And at this point, that's sort of, I don't want to say above our pay grade, but that doesn't take place at the select board meeting, it doesn't take place before our board, it happens later in the process. In terms of the, the replacement of the water line, we heard specifically from some residents that there were concerns with the water line on Wallace Avenue, that it was being dug up considerable amount of times due to leaks. During that process, we consulted with the Auburn Water District, which is an independent entity, on their track record with respect to Wallace Avenue, and whether it was showing as an abnormal or an excessive amount within their system, and whether they had any intention to replace it within their current capital plan. And the answer was no, no, and no. That, that no, it was not a special extremely high number based on their findings, that no, they did not have any plan to fix it within their capital, current capital plan. And then we did ask them whether or not the developer, whether they, whether or not they could provide enough water to the developer, as part of the discussions that we had, and they were able to meet this development's needs with the water. So considering all of that, considering that the pipes do not have to be replaced, considering that the, there's no plan on the Auburn Water District currently to replace the pipes, and considering that they can get a letter saying that the water can be met, do you think that the ZBA would have an argument to say, you still have to replace the entire water line on Rochdale Street outside of the lip as a condition, knowing that it's not the fault of the developer, and it's not needed to meet their water needs?
Based on all of that, no. They couldn't have a justifiable, a defensible condition requiring that. But similar to the traffic, the water issue needs to be vetted. So they would have to do flow testing, they would have to get a fire protection engineer, they would have to understand that, you know, the street is at 563, the site's at 586, the building's 45 feet tall, what are the fire suppression needs on that fourth floor, and can they get water up there, or do they need fire pumps? And there may be a little bit of gamesmanship here from the standpoint of, an eight-inch line gets them out of doing fire pumps. But you don't know until all of that is studied and, and peer-reviewed. So that's, that's again, part of, part of the ZBA process.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig, right?
Uh, yes, relative to the, the safety of our neighborhood again, um, we're not trading safety for a water line. You know, you, you, you don't live on my street, your kids don't play in my street. I almost clipped a kid coming out of my driveway last night, coming around the corner, right where that driveway is. These kids are riding these electric bikes now, almost clipped them, he doesn't even know it. I know it because I saw him at the last minute, okay? So before you, you know, everybody's doing the dance around, well, do we have to be responsible for this? Who owns the water line? You said that the water company's a private entity. Do they own the water line, or does the Town of Auburn?
The ratepayers pay for the water line, so it is the ratepayers, which is a private entity.
Okay, then why are you negotiating on our behalf for a new water line if it's not ours?
Because the concerns of the residents brought forth that they were digging and it kept failing, and we were trying to mitigate the construction and future construction in the neighborhood, because this will be a huge impact.
And it is yours. So you, if you get your water from the Auburn Water District, which within this area...
But he was trading, he was trading it...
Let me, let me finish. Those water pipes belong to you, the ratepayers.
Yes.
So if they are, need to be replaced in the future, if, if it's not done as part of this project, if things continue the way they are, and at some point in the capital plan, you have to replace these, it is coming out of your pockets as ratepayers, not as taxpayers, so it's not our constituency at that point, it's ratepayers and you're the constituency of the board that you vote for the Auburn Water District. The reason why it's a separate entity is because there are other water districts within the town that provide different water to different areas of the town. But it is your water, it is your water lines, it is you, as the ratepayers.
Understood. But we're talking about too, we're talking about, we're going after something that we necessarily don't want, we, we're pretty content with things the way they are. Now, I understand that that isn't how 40B works. The state does this. You know, they made a law back then, and the long, the long reach of the state, I've been a contractor for 55 years in the state of Massachusetts, I still hold my license, I still have people out there working, we've worked in water, sewer, and gas industries, we were mason contractors that built water and sewer treatment plants all around the state of Massachusetts, all right? So we've seen a lot of these projects, but we're talking about this project, we're talking about the Town of Auburn, and we're talking about what we're asking you to do as a board, and, and we were very clear about that. So I know you're looking for a reason to sign this thing tonight, but we're asking you not to.
If I may, through the chair, and again, I'm asking for a reason why it wouldn't benefit the residents of the neighborhood. Because it's still, in my view, everything that we've learned about 40B, it's going forward, whether we fight him or get something is, is the difference. And that's, again, if there's a clear way, and other projects have provided that clear path of, you know, it's on the wetlands, this developer is moving away from the wetland, they're doing everything to mitigate. The safety concerns are the thing that I can't quantify, and probably won't be quantified even through the ZBA, but as they're brought up, they're going to continue to be mitigated, and then it would stop. So moving forward with a lip gives the ZBA more that they can continue to ask for if they so choose, if sidewalks aren't in their vision through engineering, they can certainly remove that and say, hey, if, if you're not moving forward with sidewalks, could we utilize that for something else that may come up?
He's offering 200 feet of sidewalk, or 300 feet of sidewalk, and an area that takes you to nowhere, the sidewalks to nowhere.
So again, that's definitely something that could come up through the ZBA and, and have those discussions and negotiate. Again, the concerns were, there's no place for the kids to go, they're walking in the middle of the street. Outside of the project scope?
Not just the motorcade.
Correct, outside of the project scope.
Mr. Capaldi, you do not, you do not address the board from the audience, you have not been recognized, you've been warned in the past. Well, I'm telling you, you're the second person who's done it...
Be consistent.
Twice.
All right.
I am consistent. You've been warned once, this is the second time. Don't do it again. And also, we don't address individual board members, you address the board, the chair can speak for the board, or individual members can speak for the board. Nobody up here is looking to do one or the other. We had multiple public hearings to get, to solicit responses from the neighbors, these two gentlemen tried to encapsulate that. I am hearing loud and clear, you don't want it. I have nothing, if I vote no tonight, I can go home and go to sleep. If I vote yes tonight, and I think, oh, well, the town got something, I can sleep. But I'm hearing that you don't want it. Okay. I'm perfectly willing not to enter into a lip agreement tonight with this developer based on what you've all said. That's my position.
Um, all right, now... I believe Ed Parquette was the next one signed up.
Ed Parquette, 92 Wallace Ave. Can everybody here, okay?
Yeah, make sure you speak, yeah, make sure you speak loudly enough, please.
All right, the, first of all, one of the things, going back to what we just said, is this developer has taken this project from 72 to 96 units to offset the price of the water pipe. And that's just going to cost the town more money in town, and again, impact these individuals that live on this street more. So it's not a given. He's making it up someplace else. Also, the Auburn Water District, when they gave you that recommendation on the water volume and stuff, that was when this was two-story buildings, it was four two-story buildings. They weren't pumping up to four stories, and it was a whole different aspect of it. So you haven't got the update on the water department either. But, I want to address the, the lip agreement, and I've got some, some notes here on, on the lip agreement, and I'm going to refer to them by page number on, on the lip agreement. On page number one, the memorandum states that the Prentice Place Auburn LLC is the owner of the property. Our understanding is that there is a P&amp;S agreement, and they do not own it yet, it's still owned by David DeLoris. And he's the one that's tried to put this project in there 15, 16 years ago, and it was turned down for safety concerns, which it was addressed earlier. Those safety concerns haven't changed, and it has to do a lot of it with the fire department being able to get their trucks in, which are a lot bigger nowadays. Again, on page one, will the 24 units, 25% of the 96 on the lip agreement be portioned to each building as they open? Eight per building, so the town will get its Safe Harbor credits on a timely manner. And I say that only because of the credits that were rescinded in the Albert Street project, because the builder has decided to wait until the project's complete before he puts 40B people in it. So the town has lost their credit. Page number two, the developer has met with the town staff to review the project plans. Chapter 40B states that the local residents should be part of that process. That did not happen. Excuse me. Required by 40B also, the residents did not receive the 14-day notice prior to a town meeting, and that is receipt of 40B notice for 14 days, not the day of mailing. It also states that the select board will be provided with a letter to support the town, the town's ZBA before the review is, it's reviewed by the town departments. I kind of wonder if this, and it's stated further down in this, which I'll address later, who's running the show? They want you to, to provide a letter to the ZBA saying you support it. So if, when it gets to the ZBA, they're looking at, do you all support it? Why is that important to him, if he's going to go directly to the ZBA? Page number three, the developer agrees to replacing the water main, which we spent an awful lot of time on here. And again, the town is on the hook for repaving the road. But one of the things I want to address on that is the, the traffic study that was done on the previous project stated that a safety study should be done. Highly recommended a safety study be done, still has not been done. A traffic study, or a safety study, has not been done on this new project with the additional units, it's up to 96 now. They state they will construct a wider road. Again, we've talked about that a little bit, but this cannot be done. I talked to the DPW, they've looked at it, and they said, with some really creative engineering, that might happen, which means that they're going to have to go to the, they're going to have to move the fire hydrants, the telephone poles, because the fire hydrant and the telephone poles and the catch basins are in the middle of the road. All the right-of-way, the other 20 side, 20 feet of the right-of-way is to the right, or down in the woods, down the hill, down the embankment from the fire hydrant. There's no room to move this road, to widen it. And they say they're going to do it, but they also stating there that if it doesn't work out, then they're, they're not going to bother, which kind of makes me wonder, again, who's running the show? They state, well, they can, excuse me, the sidewalk issue I just talked about, the sidewalks they're paying for is 250 to 300 feet. Again, a sidewalk area to nowhere. It does no benefit to the town. The site plan has not been approved by the fire department, DPW, or the police, because they don't have a plan to approve, and the plan has changed from last year, it's gone to 96 units now. Again, the sidewalks from 60... Again, the sidewalks from 68 Wallace Ave to Rochdale Street, approximately 2,200 feet to be paid for by the town, is going to run into the same problem. Even though you're paying for it, it can't be done because of where the property lines and the right-of-ways are. It's only going to cause the street to shrink. The whole of Wallace Ave is like that. The center of the road is not the center of the road. Page four. Sidewalk, excuse me, being redundant. Again, on page four, leave mature trees 10 to 20 feet wide perimeter around the property. This property was completely clear-cut, right to the property lines about 15 years ago. The only trees you're going to find, they're going to be mature trees, are on other people's property. They didn't cut the buffer zone, but the rest of the property was clear-cut. The site plan will reflect a 20-feet disturbance buffer, which will only be able to see, which you will only be able to see the four-story hotels and the parking lot in your backyard. It's not going to block anything. Because these buildings are four stories high. By putting a little shrubbery that's hanging off the trees isn't going to save anybody's view. A part of the roadway widening is a solid fence or a landscape screening for the people that are down the hill. They're going to have all the headlights coming at them. Now, the way he states here is, the screening of the headlights and the shining into the homes from the side entry is subject to DPW approval. Again, DPW doesn't know anything about this. And the second part is, this is down a hill, a quite substantial hill. So putting screens up would be like going to a movie theater. That's how high it would have to be. Again, these are things they've agreed to do that aren't practical. DPW is not aware of this, and it does not address cars going across the street on a steep bank and into the houses below, especially during a slippery, snow, ice season, foggy conditions of people that are not aware of these conditions there. Page number five. This one's kind of comical. The project will be designed to take into consideration walking trails that exist on the property. Consideration will be given to conveying the trails to the town. There are no walking trails on this property. No one has walked in these woods. I've been in the neighborhood for 76 years. Nobody walks in those woods. The trails there are from the neighborhood kids and the parents and people that live over on Rochdale Street that come through the woods with their motorcycles, motocross bikes, and various electric vehicles. They've been riding through that area for years doing that. And if you look at the plan, the parking area and the road entering the area envelop all of that trail on that property. We have, and they're going to convey it to the town. The only other trails that are there are on other people's properties. There's no trails that can be conveyed to the town. None. This, if you've, I'm sure you've all seen this picture of this project. It encompasses the entire property. And the trails, if you go on those trails, I know one of the members said that he went and looked at the trails. They're motocross trails. But if you follow the trail, they all end up in another guy's, one of the neighbor's yards down the street where all the kids come from with the bike. And the only other entry is on the road where they intended to have the road to go in for this development. So there is no trails there. It says also on page five that the select board, again, shall support the project during a public hearing held by the ZBA, as stated on page two. The select board will provide a letter of support to the project and the ZBA. Again, that's why I've said a few times previously, talk about the letter being sent to the ZBA. It should not be sent. The traffic study on the 72 units was 356 trips per day, excuse me, 536 trips per day just for the residents. With the recommended that the safety study be done. The safety study still has not been done. And now we're at 96 units, and just doing some quick math, is going to be about 800 trips a day. And again, we still need a safety study for that 800 trips a day. There's been two fatalities on that street, not only a couple hundred feet away from this, where this is going in on the corner. The Auburn selectmen have entered into an agreement over the winter months and with no input or notification to anyone, even though they told us at the last meeting, I think it was September last year, that Dan Craig would be invited to all the meetings as a representative of the neighborhood. That was agreed upon. Never happened. The town has done, excuse me, has not done a cost of community survey, which is something that's talked about in 40B process. It's not mandatory, but it's a, in other words, what is this project going to cost the town long run? Now, the last time I talked about this, last year, I had done some work on what it was at the time. And at the town of Auburn, it was already at a point where they were spending $1.20 for every dollar of revenue they took in. And this is just going to add to the cost of the town. Again, this is going to affect the tax base. Schools are going to change, et cetera. Highway department, everything's going to change. Recent 40B regulatory changes require that a more extensive review of the project design and how they fit into the neighborhood context. The town selectmen, town meeting managers, excuse me, town managers seem overly concerned with the Safe Harbor scores. And I say this for the reason, that's the measurement the town gets with the 10% low-income housing. According to 40B regulation, the town is supposed to audit the developers annually after issuing permits. After issuing permits, they never look back, but can't seem to get over 5%. It seems to be a problem now. Now, I addressed this earlier, and I'm wondering why. I want to ask our expert here about this audit process. And I know that came up earlier, but it was held in a different context. Is there any requirement or suggestion in the 40B process that requires the town or suggests to the town that they audit these developers post-construction every year on an annual basis?
Yeah, on a rental project, they are. They're audited. They have to provide all of the financial data with regards to what's happening with the project's finances. And as I said, the profit limitation on a rental project is capped at 10% of the annual equity. I'm not a financial analyst, and I don't know the ins and outs of that. But there is essentially the state hires, third-party outside auditors, CPAs, to review these reports that are submitted by the developers.
Madam Chair, if I may. Is there any requirement that there be a local audit or a local monitoring of these projects with respect to affordability, number of units? I think that's what the gentleman was.
Post-construction. In other words, when they're in business.
But audit on the local level or monitoring on the local level, not on the state level?
No. In 2008, regulation changes made it clear that that's not the purview of the community, that it's the purview and responsibility of the state. Through the chair, if I?
Yes, sir.
So I know the gentleman brought up schools and the community cost. What consideration does that play in approval process at a state level? Do they, are they concerned about the community cost or the school aspects? They're concerned, but it's not, school impact cannot be part of deliberation of the ZBA in the review of the process. Many ZBAs will ask developers on larger projects to do a fiscal impact study. But it's cautioned that that fiscal impact study should be for the planning purposes of the community and not for the ZBA to use to impose any additional conditions or requirements that come out of that. Obviously, if the ZBA is in the mindset to try to negotiate with the developer, certainly that can happen and does happen. And there are mitigation packages that are negotiated on Chapter 40B projects that have included contributions towards fire trucks and other town infrastructure with regard to that. But again, those are negotiated and memorialized as contributions and not conditions.
Thank you. Continue, please, sir.
Okay. Just an FYI. In the 40B regulatory changes to Chapter 40B, it's listed that audits and cost certification requires compliance with the extensive audit and cost certification guidelines regarding the profit limitations imposed on 40B. Again, what we're looking for is the town being able to manage the process. Can the town get a report? I'm sure they do, of how many their credits are, the Safe Harbor credits they're getting. But how can they manage and make sure that the people, excuse me, the developers are maintaining the things they agree to in those agreements?
The developer, well, in a conventional 40B, there's something called a regulatory agreement. And the regulatory agreement is between the state and the developer that speaks to the profit limitation, the administering of the affordable units, the ongoing reporting and monitoring, and all of those things. In the case of a LIP, the regulatory agreement is actually triparte. It's between the developer, the state, and the town. Now, that doesn't say that the town can, has authorization or jurisdiction to get into areas that are clearly outside of that, such as cost certification and so forth. But certainly, it does, it is one aspect of the LIP process that does give a little bit more teeth and a seat at the table with regards to the administering of that regulatory agreement.
Thank you.
Along those lines, this also says in 40B that the town will be reimbursed for any costs that it incurs to perform this annual audit.
Again, the audits are from the state, so I'm not sure what you're referring to with regards to the town-bearing costs of an audit.
So you need clarification on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's just an FYI, but. Well, in closing, the Auburn Town Selectmen are the gatekeepers on these issues and the impact it has on the townspeople. The developers just don't care about either. You've heard this before. I've said it numerous times. It's, and the people that preceded me tonight have brought the same thing up. It's very important, as we move forward with this, that you be the advocates for the town people, not for the developers. The developers, if they, like, as far as I'm concerned, the stuff that's in this LIP agreement is worthless. There's no benefit to the town on any of the issues that they've called, they've said they're going to take care of in this LIP agreement. So it's, in essence, this list agreement is like not having one. They're going to do what they want to do, and they're going to tell you when they want to do it. And that's what you need to come up with a way of managing these processes. Because this LIP agreement, I don't know who did, you were involved in it somewhat, but the things they agreed to do are worthless. It means nothing to the town and nothing to the people that are sitting here. Not a thing. So again, as people have said previous to me, we encourage you not to agree to this LIP agreement, not to sign this LIP agreement tonight or any other night, and let the developer, if he's going to move forward with this, earn it. There's nothing he can do to the town. And the safety agreement that you were talking about earlier, that safety issue was the same reason that Dave Delalas was turned down on this project 15, 16 years ago. Those things are still there. And one of them was the fire department. And the fire department turned it down 15 or 16 years ago because they couldn't get a ladder truck in there. Now we're into three hotels going in there, four stories high. And the trucks have got bigger. I don't see that changing. And they can't widen the street. There are the two biggest issues right there, the safety concerns. And, yeah, excuse me. I'm just losing my train of thought. But again, we encourage you not to sign this part of this LIP agreement and not ever trust it again. And look for ways to start managing the system that are available within the 40B structure. There are ways to do it, but it takes some time. Thank you very much.
All right, we had some people who signed up to speak. Let's take a look here. Jennifer Steinberg? Oh, okay, thank you. I was hoping I was saying it correctly. Thank you.
Right. Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Steinberg. My family of four and I live at 36 Wallace Avenue. 40B expert. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. What do we have to do to get to the egregious level? Sir? If you could pause for a second, I just want you to observe something. I think our presence in this audience, I think that the extra row is added, maybe not filled out completely, shows that we're at the egregious level. I think also, the presence of two Auburn police officers at this meeting tonight is evidence that we're at the egregious level. Because I don't remember seeing police at the two. It wasn't several meetings we've had on this. It was two meetings we've had on this, okay? So I think that if we need police presence at an event, it's showing that things can be heated.
If I might say, the police chief is here for an article, for an item on the agenda, too. Thank you.
Okay. Both of them? There was a police officer in the back earlier. Okay. Oh, there were four. I'm sorry. I hope they'll all have a chance to speak. Okay. So, sir, I appreciate your detail, because I wasn't aware of this, that only 25% of units, which is a quarter, one quarter of units, must be affordable for this type of housing. I wasn't aware of that. I did a little math prior to tonight with only 80 units planned. Originally, that means that there would have only been 20, right? 20 units. So the remaining 60 would be full price. But 20 units would be at this lower price. So 60 units would be at top cost. Now the math has changed with over 90 units. So, I'm an English teacher, sorry. If this builder did not include 40B housing in the original plan, would we even be here? I'm curious, because between my own family, putting in a deck at my first house on West Chester Drive, and other friends who have bought homes in Auburn or wanted to build in Auburn, I'm just curious, would the town of Auburn actually approve a housing permit for this gentleman to build this kind of property? I can't imagine it. And I know you can't really answer that, sir. I'm sort of more saying it for the people here tonight to kind of contemplate, okay, how permits work in this town typically. It seems to me this is a big scam. It's like it's a bait and switch. And I'm curious, in your experience with 40B housing, is this what typically happens if you have these really rich developers who want more money? And so they apply for 40B housing, knowing that it's a teeny, teeny chunk of what they're actually going to be profiting from? And they go through it in this sort of backdoor way so that they can get what they want and more? I'm curious, just in your experience, if, I mean, maybe you don't know, because you only see sort of how the things start. And then, as you've mentioned many times, the state, is the state supposed to check in to make sure that everything they said they would do is what they've done? I'm curious, where am I here? I'm getting lost, too. It's a little stressful. Okay. So it seems like a bit of a scam, you know, to make a millionaire more wealthy. I'm also curious, how does the state actually monitor that true 40B housing is inhabited to ensure the builder did what he was approved to do? Do 40B apartments need to be filled before the other units? Because if the builder or whoever, I mean, I don't imagine the builder collecting money from the residents, I don't know how that works, is a realtor, I guess. But do they make it so that, and is it law, that that quarter of apartments are filled before any other apartments are filled? I mean, that by itself, I think, could take time. I'm just wondering who or how that gets monitored. And you said the state, but I'd like a little bit more clarity. What part of the state, who in the state? Like, what part of the government of the state is that? We could Google and look up their name, but it would help if you knew. The developer will profit heavily off of the other housing included in this complex, way beyond the 20 or 25 units that end up being made for low-income families. I'm also curious, what is the timeline for the ZBA's traffic study? Will the traffic study take place over several months? Like, for the bus, school bus? The school bus traffic to be included in the study? I'm curious if they have, you know, several months that they do a traffic study through the ZBA, if you know? Because if they did a traffic study over the course of one week over summer, we have residents who go away, we have less traffic. I think a real thorough traffic study has to encompass months of time to really get a sense of what the traffic is truly like, the number of police cars that maybe have to go to the street for emergencies, the fire trucks that have to get through, the ambulances, the school buses, Amazon delivery, everything, to really get a sense of what the traffic is like on that street, in addition to the residents coming and going from where they live. In closing, to the board, I won't address you directly, but I do appreciate the one who mentioned you will vote no. I want you to vote no on the LIP agreement, really just to show your integrity, to show us that you are representing what we are all here to express, what we've expressed in the last and only two other meetings that occurred on the topic of this housing on Wallace Avenue. We understand that things might go out of your control, and we understand, through this gentleman's explanation, that your hands are tied on a lot of issues. But, you know, the job of any good politician is to represent their people and to speak on behalf of what their people are asking. And we're physically here asking. I think those few members, those few residents of Wallace Ave, maybe they're in the Zoom right now, who wanted to have the water situation fixed, don't know if any of them are here tonight, but I'm sure they appreciate your continuation of wanting to have the water fixed on Wallace Ave. I think they appreciate, they hear you mentioning it at all these meetings, the water. But I think that if they were here tonight to speak, they would express that they care more about the overall safety of our street. So I asked a few questions directly to the gentleman. I don't know if I can have a seat and you can answer them?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the traffic studies, traffic studies are not typically, the traffic counts aren't typically taken in the summer because traffic is so different and school buses aren't running. So it's always recommended that they wait until the school year to do them, but there are typically one to two weeks of data gathering. And then there can be adjustments that are made to the counts from industry standards with regards to that type of adjustments. With regards to the 25%, that is part of the law, that only 25% need to count. With regards to rental projects, the full 100% of the units count towards your subsidized housing inventory. And that was something the state imposed years ago to try to incentivize rental projects being proposed. They haven't backed down from that, and towns can benefit from that if they do approve rental projects. So even though there are only 25%, all of the units would count towards getting to your 10%. Again, profits are limited, and that is audited. With regards to who lives in the units and who monitors that, the developer has to hire a monitoring agent. And that monitoring agent has to be approved by the state. And the state is the executive office of housing and livable communities. Used to be DHCD. They changed their name a couple of years ago. Most commonly, we're just referred to as HLC. And there's a whole organization, there's a whole group within EUHLC that oversees 40B. So when a developer goes to hire a monitoring agent, there's a list of those that are pre-approved by the state. They hire that monitoring agent. The monitoring agent does everything from the initial public outreach to putting together the affirmative housing action plan, to creating and administering the lottery, which people can apply to the lottery. And if they qualify and they're chosen within the lottery, they get to rent the units. Those people are subject to reporting on an annual basis. And if their income rises above the prescribed income limit, which is 80% of area median income, then they are offered to stay in the unit but have to pay market rate. That means that unit is no longer affordable. The next available unit that vacates, the developer has to, through the monitoring agent, create that unit as an affordable rental unit. And the monitoring agent will look to house a qualifying renter into that unit. So it is, from the standpoint of making sure that people who are renting the affordable units are in need, that is monitored on an annual basis.
Thank you very much. Doug Nelson?
Doug Nelson, 33 Laurel Street. Who's the chair of the board? Okay, just making sure I'm speaking to the right person. We were told to speak to the chair, is that correct? All right. So, I haven't been following this very closely until more recently, when I got something in the mail. It shows a big lot that's going to be developed. I didn't see a picture of the pond anywhere in that lot or the wetlands delineated anywhere on that. That's my first immediate concern, is where the heck is the pond? You know, this is near wetlands. That's an important piece that was left out of everything given to the people in that mailing. So that was my first concern. The rest of this, I have some notes here I took during the meeting, and that's what I'm going to go by. I have a few reactions to things and some commentary. I believe it was mentioned there was a lottery system, and they must qualify to become part of the, what's the proper terminology? Is it affordable or low income or affordable? We'll use that one. Now, do they follow the United States laws or the Massachusetts laws as far as being an American citizen?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sir.
Well, I know the state of Massachusetts acts a little differently towards residency within the country. So, you know, I think that should be a consideration here as well, that we want to make sure people are following the law.
I understand your...
Got our chief law officer right here. So, moving along. There was something mentioned by this gentleman in the green. ZBA is under no restriction as to what they do or how they decide or what their actions are. I'm just wondering, I didn't hear any mention at all tonight of the Conservation Commission. Would that be applicable with them as well? So they have no say in any of this? Okay. So the state really does have us over a barrel. So the next thing I have is a note, it was mentioned again by this gentleman. There's a need for affordable housing, and that's one of the main presumptions here. Is that correct? I have a big issue with affordable housing in Massachusetts, and particularly in Auburn. You might look at Charlton, Oxford, Sturbridge, Southbridge. Because when the Mass Pike was built, there were mobile homes built all along Route 20 for affordable housing for the construction workers there. Right off the top of my head, I did this during the meeting, I picked up Breezy Bend, Windbrook, Maravista, Acorn Acres, Whispering Pines, Southwest Manufactured Homes, and Marty's Mobile Homes, all on the town map. That's seven different groups of affordable housing. Those aren't mentioned by the state because it's part of their current affordable housing formula for 40B. Years ago, there was another formula that all the towns of Massachusetts took on and changed. That was for the schools. There was a formula for calculating school aid. I think I would hold this board responsible to the residents, not only of the town, but they should join with other boards across the state. And I would protest the way that they are doing this formula for affordable housing. I think it's absolutely unfair to a town like Auburn. We have several hundred affordable housing units if you start counting all those mobile homes. So that's a big one to me. Moving along. I heard mention of water line as a condition. You know, there's a lot of talk about water line. I'm on a private well, so that's not a concern of mine particularly. But I'd never heard any mention of water source. Are we going to need to drill new wells or put in different sources of water down the line? And there's no mention of that. And how much water is this going to draw? Just a question that should be asked. Auburn's already got some very salty water, we'll call it. You know, my mother-in-law had trouble making ice cubes. It's that bad. You know, are we just going to make that worse by, you know, just drawing more down on the wells? It was never mentioned. It should be mentioned. And I realize the wells and the water is a separate entity from the town. But, and I'm surprised, they weren't invited here to sit up on the panel as well, because that's a very important part of all of this. Are they here?
Yep, they are.
Oh, thank you. So I'll turn to you and say, you know, what's the story on the wells? I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yeah, I'll speak to him afterwards. Why don't you keep going, but I'll include him in the conversation afterward.
Okay. I would request you ask them to speak on that matter.
I understand.
Thank you. Another thing that wasn't mentioned, it's a little bit up on a hill, but it's certainly within the floodplain area. I hadn't heard any mention of that through any of this meeting. I know that was a very important issue. You know, I worked with a former town planner here in the town of Auburn, Mike O'Hara. And we had a lot of floodplain maps. I think they were called FIRM, F-I-R-M, if I remember correctly, flood insurance rate maps. But this whole entire thing would probably be within the flood zone. So, something else to consider. You know, just talking about housing in general, I just, a lot of towns throughout the state have decided to go against the state in other ways rather than 40B. The MBTA study, for example. And I feel like the town of Auburn really missed out by not opposing that. The next thing is, somebody mentioned trails and something about a picture. The trails, most of the trails I know of walking back there, I've been back there, I think it ends at the dam, which is, again, semi-private property. But then there's a house kind of attached at the end of the dam. Nice people, I'm sure. But, you know, nobody mentioned the dam either. Finally, back to the traffic thing. And again, I'm just following my notes through this meeting. My wife and her family own property near the corner of Berlin and Wallace. And heads up for the chief, just about nobody stops there. You know, everybody just goes, takes that left and keeps going. There was mentioned about children in the road. And that was very concerning when this gentleman said the traffic study will be done during the school year. You should take a drive down there during the summer at night and see how many kids are in that road. And it's just going to add another 80 or 100 kids to that number of kids in the road. Think about that. You know, there's a lot of big issues going on here. And again, I'm going to reiterate what other people said. If there's no benefit to the residents of Auburn, there's no need to sign that LIP thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. You brought up several questions. Most of those would get answered at the ZBA meeting. You mentioned mobile homes, though, and I think that's worth noting. The mobile homes are not deeded as affordable housing. They might be affordable, but it doesn't say in the deed of the property that they're affordable. So the state does not consider them affordable. Our state representative has tried to make them added, or added those mobile homes to the affordable list, and he's gotten turned down every time. So that's the consideration there. Mr. Nelson, come up here if you're going to talk.
So, Madam Chair, as Mr. Nelson's making his way back to the microphone, I just want to stress that this board had done one of the things that you had asked. We had Senator Moore and Representative Frost here for over an hour discussing 40B, our concerns with 40B, among them the fact that mobile homes are not included and a whole host of other issues. And we asked them to take our concerns to the State House in the formal legislation. They asked for a formal letter. We provided that letter to them outlining all of our concerns. And we encouraged them to meet with our counterparts within their districts to get similar letters so that they can then go to the state and advocate on our behalf and on your behalf.
Correct. I spoke to both Mike Moore and Paul Frost on that issue. And they said they were unsuccessful in moving legislation forward to deal with that. Which is, again, why I would ask this board to maybe consider, you know, filing some sort of a lawsuit with the state to look at changing that instead of through the legislature, through the courts. And I think that's a very strong stance that this board needs to take. But I think it's something people need to start doing sooner rather than later, because otherwise, they're just going to steamroll over every single town the same way they're doing here in Auburn. And it's just not right. Yep, that will be all for now.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we have a question for the Water Department. Mr. Woods here? And might I say also, as he's approaching the podium, remember that our consultant here is here to provide guidance to us and to answer our questions. So let's remember to be respectful to him. He doesn't represent the bad guys, do you know what I'm saying? So he's here to help us. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Woods, Auburn Water District. I've been here the whole meeting. The select board has been adequately addressing our position here. The district does have the cape... The district does have the capability to supply water to this development. We are currently undergoing a interconnection with the City of Worcester for redundancies should we lose one of our main sources, but the gentleman's concerned that we're going to overpump our wells, then the water's going to get salt here. That's not going to be an issue. We can supply water. The concerns were brought up to the Select Board early in the process about break history and water quality and water pressure issues. That's what, why we were brought in to get our input. Recently, the Water District has had an asset management plan on all of our horizontal assets, our pipes, our water mains, our pipes, hydrants, gates, and the like, and they were ranked based on age, break history, flow, and a number of other critical parts of that and ranked. And Wallace Avenue came in sixth in our asset management plan for water mains to replace, but as was mentioned earlier, not way up there due to break history or water quality complaints. So, the preliminary cost estimate we had to replace the water main on Wallace Avenue was $2.5 million. Being number six on the list of our assets to replace, that's, there's about $20 million of other water mains to replace before we get to Wallace Avenue. That's not including the about $40 million of treatment plant upgrades that we need to do to remove the forever chemicals, the PFOS chemicals. That's currently on our capital plan to replace those, because we have a regulatory deadline to meet. So, can the water main on Wallace Avenue be upgraded from a six inch to an eight inch? Absolutely. We have adequate flow for the project up there, but going from a six inch to an eight inch will increase the fire flow protection, provide more flow to hydrants, not only for this project, but for your houses should any of the houses on Wallace Avenue need fire suppression. Recently, two years ago, we replaced the water main, connected the water main on Palier to Wallace, and now we have more flow through Wallace. Previously, it was just a long dead end, so that's increased the flow characteristics through that neighborhood. So, it's a long kind of rambling explanation, but hopefully I addressed everybody's concerns and questions while I'm here. Anyone else? No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list is Cheryl. And Cheryl, could you spell your last name when you get up here, too?
Sure.
And you're on 77 Wallace Ave, correct?
Cheryl Kosgarten, K-O-S-E-G-A-R-T-E-N.
Thank you. Just make sure you speak into the mic, okay?
Sure. Thank you. Okay. I'm a little all over the place, so I'll try to pull myself together here. We were talking about safety during the development and the execution of the development and the construction. Our concern, and we've said it, all of us have said it, it's a safety, it's everyday safety about living here. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're really concerned with. The street's extremely congested. You can't get by. It's a single lane, really. Cars are queued up just to pass each other. There's, there's parked cars all over the street, deliveries, drive-throughs, visitors, emergency vehicles. It's arduous, and it's very, very difficult. So, that's, it's really very, this is a bad situation. We've spoken about elevations, too. I'm an engineer as well, and Newton's Law, body in motion tends to stay in motion until it hits something, basically. And in this case, on icy conditions, that would be Bob and Julie's house right at the bottom. That would be their property, their belongings, God forbid, a person, their home. It's dire. It's absolutely dire. That being said, give or take, there's about 70 houses on the street. We're thinking of doubling that with this proposal. We're at max capacity now for safety. With that, I live, of those 70 houses, if you could just picture two houses, just two, 77 Wallace and 69 Wallace, in the course of about two years, we've had three major car accidents resulting in four totaled cars, utility pole damage, our property damage, and one fatality. So, so how, it seems, it seems very logical and a huge, huge miscalculation to put this in this neighborhood, to push the capacity of what we have already. That being said, I might just be a name up here and just a resident and just a taxpayer. That's all I might be to the board or whomever, but I mean more to that to my family. And with this fatality that was right next door to us, picture yourself, I was outside when that happened, not that particular one. I was outside when the car lost control coming from Rochedale Street to Berlin, lost control, missed the turn, which is our yard, went right down our driveway, smashed our cars, smashed our trucks, hit our tree. They tried to crawl out the windows to escape and run away. It was a rental. That being said, all I'm trying to say is, 30 seconds earlier, I was standing in my driveway right where that happened. So, picture your family, your daughter, your wife, your husband, your child. Picture that, and I could have been a statistic. So, I might be a taxpayer, and that's all I might be here, but I mean more to that to my family, and so does everyone on our street. All of our neighbors mean the world to themselves, their families, and everything. So, how much more do the residents at Wallace Ave need to be subjected to before we clue in that this is a terrible idea? It's just terrible. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Tatro? Robert Tatro?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Robert Tatro, Fort Ridge Drive. So, I'm going to try to stand in between the two crowds tonight, between the board and the concerned citizens here, and hopefully with the, my intent is to kind of bring everybody together. So, everybody has a lot of good concerns tonight, there's no question about that, but as a member of the zoning board, I've stood in this particular spot right here a few times now, and each neighborhood that comes before has the same impassioned pleas. And unfortunately, the impassioned pleas is not what's going to change the outcome of this project. As much as I hate to tell you that, it's just the truth. We're going to get to know each other pretty well over the next several months when you come in front of the zoning board. But before I really get into it, is I, this is a listening meeting that they provided. This is something new that our new town manager has incorporated, along with the BOSS, to present more information as much as possible to get this stuff out there to everybody. So, there's no kind of backdoor meetings or any kind of crazy stuff like that going on. What I would urge you to do, really please consider, is a two-pronged approach. What I would recommend is, you please ask the board to continue negotiating in good faith on behalf of you with the lip agreement. Let them complete the lip agreement, let them sign it, because we have some things in agreement. The next step is because this is a listening meeting, Mr. Capaldi talked about the road safety issues. You know, I think the gentleman that was here, I forget his name now, but, and I don't want to talk specifically about what he talked about because he's not here any longer, but, you know, construction issues. What I can tell you is, what we would consider to be something that we would really not give a variance to, that doesn't apply at the state level when it comes to 40B housing. I'm sorry, but it doesn't. I've mentioned this numerous times, I've stood in front of meetings saying, what about the schools? They don't care. That's not what they're interested in. That's something that we're going to have to absorb in the long run. I want you to also keep in mind, they want to put 1,600 total apartments in Auburn. Okay, so your project is relatively small compared to all the other projects they're trying to put here. What I would recommend is probably go have a coffee meeting with Mark Lindblom. He's very, very knowledgeable. He's very, he's more than welcome, you know, he'll meet you at Dunkin' Donuts or whatever kind of convenience situation. I would also recommend going and meeting with like Danny Largis. He just went through it with his situation. And what I can tell you is, towards the end of it, with all this negotiation, what they realized was, the town did get them the best deal they're going to get, and that's really what this comes down to. I hate to say it, but you're going to realize, this project is coming. We can't stop it. I would love to stop it. I stood here and rang a bell and read off of a scroll, and the only thing I didn't do was wear a chicken suit up here to get the attention. I really tried everything I could. So, and here, they are trying to absorb all this information and take it so they can present to the state. So, again, what I would recommend to do, let them finish the lip agreement, because that's consistent negotiation throughout the process. And when it gets to us, then we have something to start on. Because what happened with the last project was, they threw the lip agreement out, and then myself, Darlene, the good doctor, and a couple of others spent numerous hours up here negotiating with the developer to get all those items back in the lip agreement at the last minute. So, it kind of ended up going full circle, and here we are again. That's really what happened. During the process of this negotiation, you're going to come to the board, and you're going to have different ideas. You might say, oh, I want a buffer zone here, or I want that. Believe me, we will do everything we possibly can to make it as comfortable as we can. As far as the road safety concerns, I hate to tell you this, but they don't apply the same rules to 40B housing as they do to if Mr. DeLalas wanted to put 150 or whatever the number of unit houses were there at that time. They really don't. We would have denied that project based on this, let's just say, if it came before us as an individual developer that was not 40B, the likelihood, and I don't speak on behalf of the board, but it would be likely that we would probably deny that permit. Doesn't apply that way to 40B. They'll cut that road open to make it 24 feet wide, so a ladder truck can get in there without a problem. One of the things we were able to do with Danny Largis', I use that as a reference, but the Perry Place project, is we were able to get an entire roof floor taken off that abuts his property. So, now he won't see it with larger shrubbery, different designs, different buffer zones. Safety is something that's paramount. You mentioned that, the kids playing on the street, what about the school? We can probably get like a bus stop designated in there. Those are the types of safety things we can do. But I can tell you this, the state will not walk away from this project. I just, I know that the board can't tell you that, but I'll stand here and tell you that, this is going to go through, whether we all like it or not. 40B in its origin, and I apologize, I'll be very brief, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to make it so you all can work together a little better. 40B in its origin came from the busing strikes in Boston in the 60s and 70s. When the kids were getting their heads run over, and I've talked about that in a couple of meetings, but it happened, you can go look it up in the old days, and two city councilors, that's how it started, it was originally a Boston city ordinance, two city councilors got into an argument, and they said, we don't want busing. Well, you're going to get busing. Well, no, we're not. And all these things happened, and they said, well, good, guess what? Everybody's going to have busing now, and they created 40B. And it was never supposed to go outside of Boston, then it was never supposed to go outside of 128, then it was never supposed to go outside of 495, and here we are in Auburn. They just, this same builder that we primarily deal with, just went through Upton, Millbury, Grafton, and now they're in Auburn. That's what they do. So, this is a different builder, and I know that from what I've heard from the town is they've been incredibly open to negotiation, which is rare. A million-dollar water line, I know that doesn't sound like much, but it's a big improvement for the town that the taxpayers don't have to pay. It's not even a drop in the bucket as compared to the impact that it's going to have on your lifestyle. I fully understand that, and it's very frustrating. Believe me, it's frustrating. But I think what I would, again, I would suggest that let them work on the lip agreement. It really is in your best interest. Then what's going to happen is, they're going to take all the information and all the legitimate complaints that you had tonight, they're going to put it into a package along with the information from these folks here, based on maybe police concerns, fire concerns, highway department concerns. They put a really nice package together, and this was from Dory, by the way, and the last time this is what happened. This is what delayed Athens Street. A well-organized orchestrated response. And now, we don't know, from what I'm hearing, Athens Street is back on the pallet again. I don't really know, but all I'm saying is, the way they've managed this so far has been the best way I've seen it done since. And there's only, I think, Mr. Carpenter, myself, I think, believe you, and Mr. Cussy are the only four people left in town that have actually worked on every single 40B in this town. So, I'm telling you, this is the best way to do this. Let them work on the lip, and then let them bring your safety concerns to the state and take a two-pronged approach. I promise you, that will be the best course moving forward, and then you can kind of evaluate everything else after that. So, I apologize for taking too much time, but good luck. I'm sure I'll be seeing you eventually, too, sir, so have a good night.
Thank you very much. Might I add, too, that Mr. Tatro referenced on that previous 40B project that the lip agreement got thrown out. The town negotiated one, and the developer at the end said, I decided not to sign it.
Right, correct. So, what happens, too, is you've got to understand, once it reaches the zoning board, the 180-day clock starts, the applicant has the ability to extend that 180 days, which passed applicant in the one we're referencing to, we went 11 months. So, you've got to keep in mind, they negotiated for a year, we negotiated for a year, and they're still going to be going through their permits. So, even if we do this in good faith, it's still two and a half years down the road, right? Or two years down the road before they break ground. So, again, it's not, I can't tell you that it's going to make you feel any better, and it's going to be any better situation for your neighborhood. I totally get that. It isn't. But again, the best course of action right now is to negotiate, get the best deal you can, get the best upgrade you can, and then while they work on the safety issues with the state, that's really what I would suggest. So, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we have one more speaker signed up, Heather Foster, 46 Green Street. And again, just make sure you speak into the mic. Thank you.
Heather Foster, I live at 46 Green Street. My prior maiden name is Lux. We've been a staple in this town for a very, very long time. We own Lux Tree Farm. I own the abutting property to that farm, which was actually my great-grandmother's farm altogether. And I've got a couple of concerns that, you know, we haven't really addressed in this meeting, but I've been calling the Town Manager's Department. I've spoken with Adam, the town planner, over the last few weeks, and kind of came up with some creative ways that I think the residents and the town can kind of come together and maybe, you know, it's been mentioned, let's make him work for this, right? There's things in this town that we could use, that we need, that are happening right now that we haven't talked about yet. The new safety complex, we're putting down a lot of money as a town, but we're also taking out a ton of debt. Is there a way for us to make a concession in this lip agreement where this developer contributes to a portion of that safety development? The fire department is going to have more people calling, more runs out there. It's going to be probably a little bit more difficult to get the big ladder trucks in there. You're going to have police forces out there who are going to be patrolling and monitoring. You're going to have ambulance rides. You're going to have people who can't even afford an ambulance ride. You're going to have those out there. They're not going to pay the bill. The taxpayers pay those bills. So, I think there's, you know, in terms of trying to get that push and pull between what the builder is trying to do through this lip agreement, which I applaud him for, because it's very big of him to come forth to any type of neighborhood and say, hey, I want to work with you, but I will also want to do this at the same time. That's going to majorly impact the way that you live and the area in which you live in. The schools, I know we can't do much about that, but could we ask for money for enhancements for the schools? I just signed my daughter up for kindergarten at Bryn Mawr. How many of you have sent your kids to Auburn for schooling? It is very tough to get into the Auburn School. She went to Our Lady of the Angels last year for kindergarten. She is repeating kindergarten this year, and I was already asked by the principal if I would move her to Pakachog, because there's one too many kids enrolled at Bryn Mawr. That's embarrassing. As a town, that's embarrassing. My son, who is being diagnosed with a disability, until he gets his diagnosis, he doesn't have enrollment in preschool in the town of Auburn. He also goes to a public school that I may have to pay myself to get an aide. I may have to pay somebody else's salary to get him help in his class, because our town doesn't have it. That's also embarrassing. Can we ask for some money to help get, get our schools what they need? If we're adding more children to the mix, you're talking about COVID babies. I had one five months before COVID and during COVID. There's a lot of babies out there. They're all of the same age, first grade and under. It's only going to get worse. The other one, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the Stoneville Pond Bridge is collapsing. I called that into the DPW because I bought, you know, an $85,000 car that I nailed a one and a half foot divot in that bridge four times in one week. Instead of replacing and filling back in that hole, they put a steel plate over it. The bridge is collapsing, and it will fail. So, if this builder decides that he wants to take cranes and trucks and all of those things over this bridge, bad things could happen. I think, you know, could we ask for money for projects like that to enhance our town? And I know it's not what we want to hear, and it's not what might be the neighborhood's approach to like their best way of living, but I'm trying... approach to like their best way of living, but I'm trying to make good of a really crappy situation because I don't think it's going away. If he, if we don't, whether we approve or deny the lip agreement, you can tell me if I'm wrong to the board, whether we approve or deny, he can still go to the state. He can still get his approval and he can still build. Because at this point, we don't have any egregious safety concerns, but we can try to make do with what we have and what we need as a neighborhood and a town. What kinds of things do we want to see? Do you want to see a splash pad? We don't have one of those. Do we want to see walking trails? Those are the types of things that we might be able to put into the lip agreement to help the town in an effort as a concession for what's happening. Um, the other thing I wanted to really address was, um, an issue that's been going on at the end of Green Street, Walnut Street and Laurel Street. I have record with the Auburn Police Department of trespassers on our property for years. And when I say years, I mean 50 years. Um, we have people who trespass our property, go through Green Street, at the end of Green Street, they cut through my property, my neighbor's property, and they cut up through Wallace Ave. It is all swamp back there. There is one land bridge on her property. It is a huge liability for us. One of the things I would say is without the DPW's support, I have put up my own street signs. I have a three-foot tall stop sign that I purchased myself. I have dead-end signs. I have reflectors and I pay for a personal street light at the end of Green Street that is not on the grid of Auburn, that is my own on the top of the telephone pole. What happens when people don't see those dead-end signs is they end up in my yard. I have two small children, I have two dogs. They've driven off the embankment, they have driven around our fire pit in our backyard and drove off the other side of the embankment. It is all cliffs back there. It's a huge liability and people fly down there because they think that it's Berlin Street onto Wallace Ave and they turn right into my yard. How would the town mitigate a situation like that and help the existing residents who are already dealing with these issues? That's, it's a huge concern. Um, Laurel Street, good God, if we have someone hit one of our patrons that are buying a Christmas tree, that would be terrible. I just asked the board if we can kind of look at the way that we're structuring this lip agreement, look at the language within that lip agreement, look at the limitations within the wording that they're using and, you know, maybe as a neighborhood, maybe as a town, we kind of look at where do those opportunities lay and what can we get into this lip agreement that would really kind of benefit everybody and/or the neighborhood in general that would be the ones who would suffer from a project like this. And I, I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to talk who hasn't talked yet? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Cheryl, right?
Forgive me for, for jumping up here and saying this. I don't need a splash pad. I need not to get killed in my driveway. We do have egregious safety concerns, so please don't sign this. Please don't agree with this. We have fatalities, we have people that are getting injured, we can't walk, even walk dogs without jumping in someone's, off the street into someone's yard. There are egregious safety concerns. I'm sorry, I don't mean it rudely. I don't have children in the Auburn school, I pay my taxes. I don't need, and forgive me for saying rudely, I don't need a splash pad. Don't let me get killed in my driveway, which is 30 seconds earlier would have happened. There's too many people on this road. This project does not belong there. It's a magnitude to double the capacity of, of the street. This is danger at its highest level. I wouldn't sleep tonight if I didn't come back here and retort some of this. I apologize.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, Mr. Nelson and then Mr. Paquette.
Hello, Doug Nelson, 33 Laurel, once again. I just want to respond to a few things that, uh, I guess it's Bob Tatro had said earlier about, he said, the state will not walk away from this project. It's coming. That's what they do. They need a well-orchestrated response. And again, I'm going to reach out to this board to make that response. I think, you know, we've tried the legislative response. I think we need a judicial response coming from the town of Auburn. We need, we need to send a message to the state that we do not want this any longer. We've had enough.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing Heather had mentioned, uh, you know, trying to pull some stuff out of the developer. Uh, swim, you know, there's no swim program in Auburn. There used to be a swim, a swimming area at Rotary Beach. How many children are going to be coming into this new place and are going to go straight for that pond? And we know who's going to be getting called on that. Uh, it's, it's, we can all see it coming. It, it's not right. But you know what? If they could, uh, work on putting together a swim program for the kids of Auburn and clean up Rotary Beach and, you know, trim it up and make it nice once again, put in some docks and, uh, swimming platforms, you know, I've heard it was a really great thing back in the day. During the 70s, uh, the water was not so nice, uh, but it's been cleaned up quite a bit considerably since then.
All right, stick to the 40B, okay? Because it is getting late.
That's the 40B. That's, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it is getting late. So, um, Mr. Paquette, you wanted to talk and then finish it, close it out? Is anyone else? Just, okay.
Just some quick responses to some of the stuff that came up and I'll be really close. Number one, uh, we were just talking about the access to the lake. That's going to be a 92 Wallace Ave. That the quickest and the closest access is 92 Wallace Ave. That's private property, but they're all going to come there because there's no fence, there's no way to keep out the trespassers to, to 400 to 500 people that are going to be there. It's going to happen. To the woman that was speaking up in Lux Tree Farm, uh, William Street is, is going to be the next development for 40B, so get ready. And also to the gentleman from the zoning board, maybe they're going to get their way anyway, but I've, I've alone and I think there's a few people here to agree with me, we want to try. I can't see not trying to stop this stupid project, which is what it is. Stormwater runoff in the large parking area hasn't been adjusted, adjusted in this project either, which should be part of the application process. It's very important. It was a big issue the last time this got turned down for safety issues. The other thing was the stormwater drains being overrun and they have to be changed. Snow removal, uh, there's no place in that lot to put snow, for snow removal, except in the buffer zone. That's the only place where there's going to be open space to stack the snow unless they're going to truck it off, which should be part of the lip agreement. Environmental studies, and I know 40B has a way of getting around them because this is over 149 parking spaces. I think it's close to 200 and something parking spaces now because they've increased the size of this to offset the cost for the water mains is, should be done. This is right next to a lake. The only really good recreational lake in this town. And again, I just, I don't know, we need a fence, which should be part of the lip agreement if this is going to move forward, to keep the trespassers off the private property that have access to the lake and especially in that area. Missing from the lip agreement is the undertaking annual audit fee. There should be an audit fee charged to the developers annually to help offset the any of the costs the towns having, auditing the process or managing this process. Uh, just a question to the 40B expert here. Uh, the lip, I mean, the 40B stipulates that it has to be a minimum of 25% uh, uh, low-income housing. Uh, is there anything that stops the town from changing that to 26%, to 30%, to a higher
It can be negotiated, but it's not, can't be conditioned. It's, that's not within the purview of the ZBA.
Okay. Also Wallace Ave, uh, which was somebody brought up a few minutes ago, is heavily trafficked street as it is because it's a cut-through street. People getting off the Mass Pike come down, uh, and get on Berlin Street, cut across Wallace Ave to start so they don't have to go all the way down by St. Joseph's Church and take a left on Rochester Street. It's, there's a lot of traffic when you look in the morning when people go into work and especially when they're coming home at night. And school buses, which was one of the reasons it was shut down last time with the safety issues, the school buses can't get in and out of there. You can't have a bus stop on the edge of the road, especially with the traffic that's there. The other issue there is the road width in the winter time and even now, it's like today comes, excuse me, today coming here, I had to go maybe five miles an hour to get between the cars. And again, people get queued up waiting to pass through because there's cars parked on both sides of the road. That only, not only happens in the summer, but it happens in the winter and the snowplows come through and there's only one room for one vehicle to go by at a time because the road in most cases in, on the street are only 15 feet wide. They happen to be 18 to 20 feet in front of where this project is, but the rest of the street, if you look at it, is a lot narrower. The other thing is the rubbish bins. Uh, everybody that, uh, lives at a certain end of the street has all the rubbish bins out there for pickup on pickup days and there's a lot of them. And again, it impacts the safety of the road and it impacts the traffic that's going through. And one of the ways to raise funds that somebody was talking about from the developers during this process, I suggested maybe we might want to charge a higher tax to the developers for the money they're making on these projects and a way to generate some funds. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Thank you. Um, go ahead. Yep. Thank you.
Uh, may I ask the consultant if it is illegal to tax differently on a 40B project?
I don't know the answer to that.
So, and my understanding is that anything you would ask of any other developer, you cannot ask for more from a 40B developer.
Generally, the premise is that you treat these projects equally to any other development project as far as, um, considerations.
Madam Chair, if I just may ask one clarifying question. Whether 25% of the units are affordable, whether 50% of the units are affordable, 100% of the units count towards our, our 10%?
On rental projects, yes. So, may?
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify as well, in the lip agreement, the developer agreed to Auburn resident priority. Um, so those units would be first offered until whatever is legally required, but up to 70% um, would be given the Auburn residency requirement. And also he has agreed, which is not, um, required, to reduce the, um, area median income to 60% for several units to make it a lot more affordable, as we know affordable at 80% is still a lot of money. So those are considerations. And in the negotiation aspect, um, previous, um, 40B developments, money was donated for the overall town well-being. We really tried to focus on the impacted residents getting the benefit rather than larger programs or a lump sum of fee that could be dished out later on. So again, we tried to negotiate where the impact is going to be felt the most and provide the most benefit. So those were things that were considered and discussed, but I think again, every project's different. This one, we tried to work within the parameters and make sure that those being most affected were, um, getting what they could out of it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have some people who are, um, participating remotely in the meeting. Does anyone who's online watching the meeting have any questions? You could unmute yourself. Okay, guess not. All right, so, um, our discussion is over. Thank you. Our, our next item is, uh, item F, possible board vote on the 88 Wallace Avenue lip agreement. Do I hear any motions?
I'd make a motion that we approve the lip agreement.
I'm going to second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed. Opposed. Yep. So it's a 2-2 and it needs a 3-2 to pass, correct? May the majority?
Majority.
So it did not pass. All right, thank you. So, um, the board still has some, um, items to attend to, so why don't we take a five-minute recess to clear the room? Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion and we go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. Good evening. We're calling, um, the select board meeting back to order after our five-minute recess. Looking back at our agenda, we have, um, a board vote to donate the missile in Goddard Park to the Worcester Echoetarium as part of their educational programming. All right?
Thank you so much. Um, as you know, we've been doing quite a bit of work at Goddard Park and we had anticipated originally refurbishing the missile rocket at Goddard Park and unfortunately it is deteriorated to a point that it doesn't make any sense. Um, so we started, we're working with Amarillo, who I believe is the contractor there, and um, they have a contact with the Echoetarium and the Echoetarium did outreach to us and said they were interested in taking the missile slash rocket and refurbishing it on their own and making an education piece at the Echoetarium. So we were pretty excited about that because we knew we weren't going to be able to keep it up. So they have agreed to refurbish it, use it in Worcester at the Echoetarium and we are working, and that's the next item that I'll be talking about, um, to change that area to make it something more related to Dr. Robert Goddard, um, for Goddard Park. So my request is for the board to, um, approve the donation of the missile slash rocket to the Echoetarium.
And may I note that, um, I believe we, you've reported already that the rocket is rotted from within and we're afraid it might fall down?
Yes, we have a lot of concerns about the stability of the rocket.
Okay, so it's prob, it's not, okay. Any questions of the board?
Is there any deemed value to the rocket or it's, like, I don't, I don't know how donations work in that capacity. I know it's not as much value and costs us money to keep it, so I wasn't sure if there's an assessed value to it.
I have not done an assessment or paid for an assessment because it would be at this point something that we actually have to remove and take down piece by piece because it's unsafe. I can upon board request get an assessment, um, but I'll have to...
I just don't know if there's a benefit to it. I just was asking, so if there's no benefit, I wouldn't want.
It's in that, and it's not just one area that's rotting, it's more than we anticipated, more than we expected. So it has to come down. They are willing to move it at their own expense and work with a company that's doing Goddard Park to move it to Worcester. So the town of Auburn is not responsible for moving it or transporting it.
Do I hear a motion?
Before we do that, just a question, they will cover insurance in case of any damage?
That is correct.
I will make a motion that we vote, or actually that we donate the missile, it's actually a representation of a rocket, in Goddard Park, which actually is Rotary Park, by the way, Bob. To the Worcester Echoetarium as part of their educational programming.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, next item on our agenda, update... All right, next item on our agenda, update to the board on the Goddard Centennial Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through our conversations with Echoetarium, they actually participated in our last Goddard Centennial Committee meeting. They have agreed to be the 501(c)(3) that supports the newly-produced Friends of the Robert Goddard Centennial, which is a group of volunteers within town. If anyone else wants to volunteer, please contact my office, and this group of individuals will work under the Echoetarium's 501(c)(3) on a temporary basis between now and the date of the centennial to help raise funds for the town of Auburn for the events that we plan on having. Further, we are working with the Wonder Mission, who is, the gentleman, Charles, I think some of you have met, that is very passionate about the Robert Goddard and nested Goddard Home. We're working closely with him and the city of Worcester to ensure that our events actually complement the city events and are at different times. I know that was a board concern. We are talking about establishing a mutual pamphlet that carries both Worcester events and Auburn events. So we meet monthly right now. The newly-formed Friends Group is meeting August 4th, and like I said, we take any additional volunteers who want to participate in that. So I'll be continuing to provide you updates because that group hopefully will be very active in fundraising. And right now, we've done outreach to NASA and people in Massachusetts. We have a lot of people in Massachusetts a part of NASA. As you know, there was a woman recently not far from here that was up in space for a lot longer than she was supposed to be. So there are people that we are doing outreach to that we're trying to get here to speak, and we're working with the school department on programs there to adjust their curriculum, and also the library, and our whole staff, so we're pretty excited about it. So I'll continue to keep you updated as it moves forward.
Thank you. Now, these events, I believe, March of 2026?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Through the chair, you mentioned August 4th as a meeting date. Is there a meeting location and a time, or is that to be determined?
Yes, so it's at 6:00 PM, August 4th. It's on the second-floor planning room. We currently have 11 volunteers, but if anyone else wants to join, please call my office, and we'll give you additional information. The more, the merrier.
Thank you. All right, looking back on our agenda, now we're looking at the member items. We're going to discuss and maybe have a potential board vote requesting the town administration to look into the possibility of installing advisory signage, dead end or no outlet or not a designated truck route or hill, and/or conduct a truck exclusion study for the select board to submit to Mass DOT for approval for the following streets: Upland Street, Jerome Street, Ward Street, Lexington Ave., Thayer Ave., Davis Road, Leslie Ave., Manor Road, and Sibley Street. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. So there's a reoccurring problem on Pakachog Hill, and I know it's happening in other parts of the town as well, where large trucks are diverting off of our major routes, 2012, 290, you know, and 90, in order to reach their destinations in the end. Because they're using the same ways that I use and not the ones that are designed for commercial entities that you have to pay extra for, they are being taken down regularly, these streets. And these streets are not meant to carry large truck traffic. They have everything from narrow right-of-way, low-hanging wires, trees, tight curb radii at the intersections, and there's consistently issues on these streets where, you know, these trucks are getting stuck, there's damage to town property, there's damage to residential property as well. And I just wanted to raise it at this level. I know the residents have reached out to different town departments over, you know, the months and years in order to try to have something done on a coordinated system. And, you know, under state law, the town alone cannot designate commercial vehicle exclusions. There is a requirement through Mass DOT that does a truck study, and that then has to get submitted to Mass DOT, and Mass DOT has to sign off on it. And I understand that, you know, that has been requested by the neighbors, although it has not necessarily been done, so that's why this is included in here. But there are other strategies that municipalities use to discourage use of streets or to inform the driver that you might not want to go down here because it's not what you think it is. And that's through advisory warning signs, including things such as dead end or no outlet, you know, which communicate, Joe, driver, you can't get there from here, essentially. Not a designated truck route is another popular sign that's used, just to inform the, you know, the truck driver that though this is not a commercial ban, the street characteristics are not something necessarily that you want to drive down this road. There's also the hill, and that's typically for streets like Jerome Street or Upland Road where there are street steep slopes that trucks have an issue getting up or down. And that's the sign where it has a truck on a hill, and it says 10% or 8% or 15%, whatever the grade is, and informs them. So I would just like to ask, and I'd like the board to vote to ask that, and my understanding is Ms. Ruffely might have provided additional streets sort of in her area that she's aware of that were the similar problems, is to ask the town administration through its DPW, through its police department, to look at, not just doing the truck study, but look at opportunities to install these advisory signs in order to communicate with the drivers and try to tackle this problem a little more proactively.
Through the chair, if I may, is there a standard height at which these signs should be visible? And I ask because I know Jerome already has some signage. It's just, it usually gets covered up by trees and bushes, and it's on a telephone pole, but as I drive other streets, they appear at different heights. So, again, I'm driving a car, not a commercial vehicle. Is there a standard for truck signage, and is there a standard for cars or passenger vehicle signage? And I just ask because I want to be consistent, because I know Jerome already has some signage, and it hasn't stopped or slowed anyone down in years.
So a couple of things with Jerome. I had brought the Jerome issue to town staff. One, the signage is typically, the minimum is seven feet high per the manual and uniform traffic control devices, but the Jerome, Jerome does not in and of itself have a truck commercial ban. What that sign actually says is, on Greenwood Street in Worcester, there is a ban, and you should not be using this street to get to it. You know, so it's not even any of these other sort of advisory signs that say, don't use Jerome. It's a very wordy sign. It is extremely old, is about 25-plus years old, it's extremely faded, some of the letters are missing. So that's sort of, and, you know, one of the reasons why I call it Jerome is because if we're going to communicate that Jerome is a, is a street that we don't want you on with your large vehicles, you know, that's a sign that needs to be refreshed and updated with one of the newer signs that are, that are available.
I just wasn't sure if there was best practice. Again, where it is on that pole might not be the best location, and I'm no expert, but I would like to at least consider alternate places for signage and make sure that it's the most visible.
And that's, and that goes along with, you know, it's, I would say, it's covered in the, in terms of installing additional signage, advisory signage, and, you know, our professional staff would make the determination on the most visible location and where to install these. That would sort of be the town administration to handle that.
Yeah. So Upland Street, I know when Mr. Coyle was DPW director, I think that's, we did have a study there, and I believe there is a truck restriction on the Worcester side. Having said that, you know, we might want to reach out to Mr. Coyle, and he would probably, actually, I know he would have a better recollection than myself. I certainly have no issue with any of the advisory signs that Mr. Crane is suggesting. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that we request town administration look into this very wordy but very needed detailed description. I would just say, my motion is what is appearing on, under the member item 11A, and ask town administration also to reach out to Mr. Coyle, just in regards to Upland Street, but that in no way should restrict additional advisory signs to be placed there so that people, the traveling public, will hopefully, you know, see it and respond appropriately.
Have a discussion. You said Ms. Ruffely had a list of streets as well. Should we try to add them to this motion?
She had some streets that she wanted to add. She didn't specify them, but perhaps we can reword the motion to say that other streets can be added as deemed necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I think the town, I would strongly encourage the town administration to look in any other street where residents are complaining about similar issues. I know South Street has been an issue, and there are some others in this general area as well. So, you know, anything we can do to take a more proactive route without requiring the board to come back and enter in another wordy motion.
It's a very detailed and very needed motion, but there's nothing...
Nothing's changed.
Nothing has changed as far as Mrs. Ruffely. That would have to have appeared on the agenda. I will happily amend my motion to say that we are in receipt of correspondence from another member, and we would ask town administration to review it and act accordingly as if it were part of the scheduled agenda.
And I will accept that as a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, that's done, so we have public comments now. Mr., Mr. Page? I know, it's a long meeting tonight. Thank you. Here, can you give that over?
Yes, thank you.
You gotta do what you gotta do. Excuse me. Wayne Page, I live at 90O Common Road. I am the chairman of the Auburn Housing Authority. I heard that a lady came up here tonight slamming me in the committee left and right once again, as she has in the past. I'm not going to get into it too much further than just saying that we have done everything to work with this lady, and the last few meetings, or last six, six, eight months, she's been nothing but a problem. And I didn't want to go through our council to deal with this issue. I was hoping that it was something that was going to fade away, and obviously, it didn't fade away. But the thing is, this has cost another person, a very nice lady that was on this committee. She had bad-mouthed her, said different things about her. She has made complaints about me that aren't true. She has made complaints about the board that are not true. And the way I understand it, before I even got on the board, this was a problem because she couldn't get into federal housing. That was the issue. She couldn't get into federal housing, so she's going after everybody and anybody because of the issue. And I'm really, really getting sick of somebody going after our board and going after members, going after a young lady that was on our board. She was so upset that she quit. I don't know what this lady thinks, but the thing is, is she thinks I'm going to quit. She got a big mistake. That's her first mistake, and there's quite a few other ones, which I'm not going to get into tonight because I'm going to be very polite and honest about this. And I'm going to move forward and see what I need to do because it's gone on long enough. And it's not just me, it's other board members. I got a board member that just stopped from running again because of her. I got another one that every time she looks at her, she starts shaking. This doesn't need to happen on these boards. I've been on at least, just a wild guess, between eight, 10, between eight and 10 committees in this town of Auburn. I got proclamations, a closet full of them. I got all kinds of awards and everything. This is what it's about. It's not about who can trash somebody the most. You need to work together, and if she wants to get things done, she needs to come to the board like she did the last meeting. She came, I let her talk for the first five minutes of the meeting, and then I said, no, your five minutes are up, that's fine. She got a little upset, but I said, no, you can come back. We got another citizen's comment at the end. So she came up, that time, was polite to her, and she still had her attitude. We don't need to take this from her, none of the board members. If you don't agree, we don't have, I have not seen one board of selectmen come to me and complain about the way we run our meetings. I haven't, couldn't even tell you when I seen one of the board of selectmen come to one of our meetings. As far as that's not here or there, that's just for instance. And, I mean, this lady is just out of line completely, and I'm hoping we can nip this in the bud one way or the other before it gets too more drastic than what it is. And that's the only reason why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Oh, and congratulations for being chairman.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Page. So I do want to come, that's all right, you can have a seat. I just want to say, I know that those meetings are held during the day, and I think our select board members are at work during that time. Fortunately, they're all taped, and I know we have members who've listened, who've watched the tapes of the meetings, the recordings.
No, that's fine. I don't, that's, you know, you get a chance to watch, and I do the same thing with the selectmen's meetings.
Yep.
And, what was I going to say? I don't know either. I don't know, I'll leave it at that. I had something else, but I just got mixed up.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Can I ask, the previous comment earlier, there was a 14-day response window was mentioned?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any authority or what the next steps are in this process when a formal complaint is filed, so I don't know if it's possible that the process gets emailed to us and any general rules regarding that, because, again, my understanding was there is no authority over other boards. So I just want to make sure that I understand what the role we play with a complaint letter and what actions the board should be looking into or taking.
All right, Tom Mander is going to look into that for us, and she will update us and inform us.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Just, just to clarify, there is a mass general law that allows the select board, and I don't know the process that you have to go through, where a member of the public can complain, issue a formal complaint, which is what we received, to the select board about a member of a local housing authority. And in that law, the select board does, after a hearing, have the authority to remove a member with cause or for cause.
And again, through the chair, if there's any other recall, again, I don't know what those levels are, is it a discussion or what the process is? So anything that could be provided, or at least give me a place to look to understand what role the select board plays in the process?
Absolutely. No problem.
Yep, she will. Thank you. Mr. Page?
I would like to say that I'm very happy with the girl that you guys had appointed to the board. She's a very nice girl, and hopefully she'll work out fine. And if there is a complaint, I didn't hear the whole story tonight because I was out in my yard enjoying my life. And I was told, I got a phone call saying, there's a lady up there slamming you again. I said, all right, I'll go up this time, but I'm not going to get too deep into it, and I'm not going to. But if, if she had made a complaint through you guys, I'm making the same complaint, if that's the way that works. I don't know if I need to go through you because we're different boards. We're the state, your town, that may do it that. I don't think Todd is right on that issue.
Well, we're going to find...
That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. We're going to find that out. If you do have any sort of complaint that you want to file, you'd want to put it in writing...
Okay.
...and give it to the town manager.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Well, I'm going to check with...
All right. Sure. Anything else?
I would just say that if Mr. Crane, which I have no reason to doubt Mr. Crane, he does his research... does his research, the complaint to this board is because you're an elected official. The person who made the complaint is not an elected official, and therefore, I don't believe you would make, what would be the purpose of your complaint to this board? She's a resident, she has a right, as you do, to address this board. There's, there's nothing that the board of selectmen is going to do to, if she wants to come here and, and share her concerns, we're here to listen, and-
Okay. Well, whatever we need to be done, because I know we got a lawyer and algeons.
Okay, thank you.
Just so everyone's reference, Mass General Law, Chapter 131, Section 1B. I always do my research.
1B? Okay. All right, anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.